Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the Warminster Township Board of Supervisors meeting for Thursday, August 15, 2019. Would everybody please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? Mr. McKee, would you please lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Would everybody please remain standing for one moment to remember those who are protecting us both at home and overseas. Good evening, everyone. Before we get to announcements, I'd like to let everyone know that per an ADA request, we have with us this evening a pair of American Sign Language interpreters. You'll see them up front performing their duties. I would ask that if you come up to speak or speaking with the board or doing a presentation, that we keep cross-talk to a minimum in order to allow the interpreters to do their jobs to the best of their abilities. With that, we'll begin announcements. Ms. Fescator.
Good evening. I have announcements on behalf of the Parks and Rec Department. We have the incredible Edible Veggie Contest July 15 through September 21. Area residents are invited to participate. If you have a ripe tomato, cucumber, zucchini, eggplant, or squash, would like to enter the contest, stop by the rec or Mr. Community Park to have your veggie weighed and recorded. A prize will be awarded for the largest, heaviest veggie in each category. Enter as many times as you wish. August Yard Sale Registration for our annual yard's Fall Yard Sale will take place August 24th from 8:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at Warminster Community Park. Spaces are $25 each, limited in number, and they go quickly. Discount tickets year-round for amusement parks, local attractions, also the movies. You can go to Warminster Community Park or go on the website. Electronic recycling event with Par Recycle Works that they've done in the past, they've done such a great job, Saturday, September 14, 2019. Annual Fall Golf Scramble, Monday, October 14. Touch a Truck, Saturday, October 26, which is a great event for the entire families. Friends of Warminster Park, the Hometown Hero banners are available. We're pleased to announce that the first set of Hometown Hero banners have been installed along Veterans Way in Warminster Community Park. Friends of Warminster Park invite all residents to participate in the Hometown Hero Banner program honoring our local veterans. For an application or information, please stop by the Parks and Rec office. Free lunch for the Centennial School District Mobile Meal Van will be in the parks listed Monday through Friday until August 23. This free lunch program is available to all children ages 1 through 18. Fresh connect at Warminster Community Park. Bucks County Opportunity Council distributes fresh vegetables to qualifying individuals Tuesday at Warminster Community Park. More information on any of these programs, contact the Park and Rec office at (215) 443-5428 or visit the website. That's it, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Ms. Fescator. Mr. McKee.
I have no announcements tonight, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Rick Phillips.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's a quick reminder, if you have any unwanted or unused prescription medications, you can safely get rid of them over at the lobby of the Warminster Police Department. It's the green box at the top of the steps. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rick Phillips. I just have one quick announcement. That is, Mr. Monroe, can I be with us at this moment? He's currently unavailable. He's going to try to call in later in this meeting. So if you see us trying to set up the phone, if he's able to call in, he will be joining us. Other than that, we're going to move right into our presentations. Before I call our first presentation up, I just want to let everybody know that we're going to try, now there's a lot of people in the room, a lot of people waiting to get in the room, there's a lot of events going on tonight, including a presentation, a swearing in, and a discussion around the sewer and water. So, right. So, we're going to try to move through this very judiciously. I'll try to explain everything as we're going along, and we'll make sure that we have time for everybody to speak. I also want to remind everybody, or not remind, inform everybody, that there was an executive session on July 31 at 7:00 p.m. to discuss the possible purchase or lease of real property. So now, we're going to move into our presentations. And for the first presentation, I'd like to invite up Mr. Joe Cowie of the Cowie Family Shoprite's to our podium. And he has a presentation that he would like to make.
Right there.
Wherever you wish, sir. Let me get your hand held. There you go, sir. Thank you.
Hey, Joe. Thank you. There are so many nights that the board has asked me to come over here, and the township has asked me to come over here to recognize me for something that Shoprite's done in the community. And tonight, I'm here on a different reason. I'm here to honor one of the police officers.
Officer.
Officer Bundah, who everybody knows, I think by now, about his heroic action in the community. And we're here to thank you for that heroic act and for helping us to make the community a safer place. Warminster is a better place with people like you in it. Thank you from all of us at the Cowie Family Shoprite of Warminster. And to recognize you, we're presenting you tonight with $1,000 in Shoprite gift cards for you and your family and for doing everything you did to keep this community safe. Thank you.
I'm Chief Donnelly from the Warminster Police. For those of you who don't know and haven't seen this man's lovely face on Good Day or heard him on WIP in the last month, he received a commendation for heroism the other day, and I'm going to read in part. "He is in great deal, a great deal of pride and admiration. The commendation for heroism is presented to Officer Ryan Bundah, badge 233, for an act of outstanding heroism and outstanding courage performed without regard for personal safety, which resulted in the saving of a life on July 10, 2019. Whereas on July 10, 2019, Officer Ryan Bundah, badge 233, while on patrol, was stopped at a steady red traffic signal southbound on Newtown Road at County Line Road in Warminster Township. Officer Bundah observed the white colored Ford F-250 traveling westbound on County Line Road at a very slow speed through the intersection. Officer Bundah observed the passenger of the vehicle waving his hands at Officer Bundah attempting to get his attention. Officer Bundah observed driver of the vehicle have his arms in the air and his wrist bent in a downward motion in the posture of that of an individual in active convulsions. Officer Bundah made notification into Bucks County Police Dispatch Center and activated his emergency equipment and positioned his patrol vehicle in the left of the F-250. Vehicle continued westbound on County Line Road. Officer Bundah placed his vehicle in park and exited the vehicle with no regard for his personal safety and began to give chase on foot to the F-250. Officer Bundah displaying extreme indifference to his own personal safety and displaying a high degree of courage, ran up to the F-250, opened the driver's side door, and at this time, the passenger of the vehicle advised that the driver of the vehicle was having a seizure. Officer Bundah instructed the passenger to place the vehicle in park. Passenger was unable to. Officer Bundah continued to hang onto the driver's side door of a moving vehicle as it, as now, began to travel toward opposing eastbound traffic on County Line Road. Officer Bundah, badge 233, while attempting to maintain contact with the vehicle, was able to make a partial entry into the driver's compartment of the vehicle with his upper torso while the lower torso was hanging out of the vehicle and depressed the brake pedal. This heroic action of Officer Bundah were able to bring the vehicle to a stop and prior to the vehicle entering the oncoming train, oncoming lanes. Officer Bundah and a passenger by were able to get the vehicles, after the vehicle was stopped, get the driver out, get him medical attention. So whereas his professional demeanor, acts of heroism, outstanding courage, were performed without regard to his own personal safety and results in the saving of a life, brought credit not only to you but the entire Warminster Township Police Department, and your actions are hereby commended. Congratulations."
So, we're going to, we're going to take some pictures after we get through all our presentations here. So, we're going to move on to our next presentation, which is a swearing in of one of our new police officers. And to get that started, I'm going to turn it over to Chief Donnelly.
Good evening. Again, I'm Chief Donnelly. In the past week, we fired, well, this will be our second hire, Officer Megan Wheatley was sworn in last week by Officer Judge Fennella due to a family event. She wasn't able to be here tonight, so we got her sworn in last week. Her and the officer you'll see tonight will start Monday morning. But a real brief on Officer Wheatley, she was sworn in August 8. Megan is from Willow Grove. She's a graduate of Bloomsburg University with a bachelor's degree in criminal justice and a minor in political science. And she's a 2019, a March 2019 graduate of Montgomery County Police Academy, where I believe she graduated third in her class. But tonight, Andrew?
Come on up.
Tonight, I bring Andrew Hauser. He'll be badge 239, grew up in Trevo's, Pennsylvania, in Bucks County, with his parents Jennifer, or his parents Jeff and Vicki, and his two younger siblings. Currently, he's living in Willow Grove with his fiancee Bonnie. Andrew attended Bucks County Community College, where he graduated Associate's Degree in Police Administration, graduated Temple Police Academy. He began his career in Tully Town Borough Police Department as a part-timer, and he just left Temple University Police Department on Sunday to become a member of the Warminster Township Police Department when he was sworn in there in 2017. So tonight, I present Andrew Hauser for swearing in to be a Warminster Police Officer.
Excellent. Excellent. Judge Fennella, will you come on up?
He's got the mic. Good evening, all. And if the board will just indulge me for about a half a minute, I just want to thank Mr. Cowie for his generosity to the township, and I want to give a shout out to my friend, Officer Ryan Bundah. I see, he's quite an active officer. I see him quite a lot. He's a consummate professional. He has many great qualities. It's a pleasure when he comes into court. Whatever decision I make, he accepts it like a professional. And he's Italian. So congratulations, Ryan. And Officer Hauser is here. I congratulate him. It's always a pleasure to swear in another officer. I did the Officer Wheatley, hoping to do a couple more in the coming months. We'll see. That'll be up to our friends sitting behind us here. And I'm looking forward to working with Officer Hauser in the court. And you want to introduce the lady that's holding the Bible for you?
It's my mom. My mom, Vicki.
Very good. All right. So, without further ado, put your left hand on the Bible and raise your right hand. Repeat after me. I, Andrew Hauser.
I, Andrew Hauser.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And that I will discharge the duties.
And that I will discharge the duties.
Of patrol officer.
Of patrol officer.
In Warminster Township, Bucks County.
In Warminster Township, Bucks County.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
I also solemnly swear.
I also solemnly swear.
That I will uphold.
That I will uphold.
Obey and enforce.
Obey and enforce.
The laws of Pennsylvania.
The laws of Pennsylvania.
Without consideration.
Without consideration.
To a person's race.
To a person's race.
Color.
Color.
Sex.
Sex.
Religious creed.
Religious creed.
Sexual orientation.
Sexual orientation.
Age.
Age.
National origin.
National origin.
Ancestry.
Ancestry.
Handicap.
Handicap.
Or disability.
Or disability.
Help you God.
Help you God.
Okay. Congratulations, all. Congratulations.
Congratulations. Welcome.
And Officer Hauser, I have a little thing that I give everyone, and you know, that's a commemoration of the night, and hopefully you'll have many years with us.
Thank you, Judge.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Judge. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thanks, Judge.
All right. If Officer Hauser and his family could stick around, we'll do pictures in just a moment. But our next presentation, I'd like to welcome Mr. Darren Meehan and the Fox family that does the Brad Fox Run 2019.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
All right. I'm joined by Tom and Kathy Fox. I'm pretty sure most of these people here see what I have to say, so.
Yes.
That's a good thing. The purpose of me coming tonight is to just review Brad Fox Day 2019. It took place April 6, 2019. Big success. It's a success because we have good coordination between Warminster Township, the Police Department, the residents, Archbishop Wood, which is where we stage it. They're very generous with us. For those of you who don't know, Brad Fox was a Warminster resident. He graduated from William Tennant High School. He served two tours of duty as a Marine, came back to the United States, served as a Flint Township Police Officer, and was killed in action. And this December will be the seventh anniversary of his death, so.
September.
What did I say?
December.
Oh, September. Thanks. That's why I, that's why I got these guys. Yeah, so September. And so, when Brad was killed, we put together a foundation to support his family, and then that morphed into just supporting other charities that Brad had supported in his life or that Brad would have supported. Each year, we do the Brad Fox Day in the spring, and then we have a variety of other events that we coordinate as well. So, as I said, this year was a good success by all accounts. We had probably about 750 runners and walkers. You add to that their families. We had probably about 1,000 people. The weather was beautiful. It was a good day. Everybody seemed to have, have a good time, and, and we raised some really good money for charity, and that's also part of the reason that we're here. I do want to thank the Board of Supervisors, the Township, the Police Department, the first responders. Everybody comes together and supports what we're trying to do to honor Brad, to honor the military, to honor first responders, and it wouldn't be successful if, if everybody didn't work together. And that includes the residents as well, because we work with PennDOT to close York Road for an hour, the stretch that is Brad Fox Highway. We closed that for an hour. That's an impact on the residents that live on York Road that, you know, need to get, get about their business. And they're really generous that, that they support what we're doing, and, you know, so we can't say enough about that, that we appreciate all that they do as well. Again, and Archbishop Wood is extremely generous for giving us their, their site to use for the event, and then all of our sponsors as well, but I can't get into naming those. You guys have a lot of stuff to get to tonight. So with that said, this year, as a result of our fundraising, we will disburse $50,000 in Brad's name to a variety of causes, including a scholarship in his name at William Tennant High School, one at Archbishop Wood High School. We're donating to the Warminster Police Department K-9 Unit, the Warrington Township Police Department K-9 Unit, and we donated $10,000 yesterday to Alpha Bravo K-9 to support their work as well. So with that, I want to introduce Tom and Kathy, and Tom's going to present Chief with a check.
Hi, my name's Tom Fox. In honor of Brad, my son, it's my pleasure to donate this check to you, Chief, from Brad Fox and Brad Fox Foundation for $10,000 for the, for the K-9s that are coming onboard. I'm sure they're still in training, and I'm sure they're going to be a great asset to the township. So with that said, Chief?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you very much. Okay, we're going to take a quick recess here to allow for pictures around the presentations. When we come back from the recess, we'll get started with our land use matters and move on with our agenda. So, brief recess. Okay, let's bring the meeting back to order. Thank you for giving us time to take those pictures. We're going to move on now to our land use matters. Public hearings and ordinances up first is the golf course irrigation project. For that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Schuster.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have three sub-items under this agenda topic, and I'll just give a quick overview of what occurred. If you recall, you did approve going out to bid for the golf course irrigation system. That's a significant project for the Five Ponds Golf Course. This did fall under the Responsible Contractor Ordinance, which does require several things, including an apprentice program and, and other stipulations in there that any bidder would have to, have to be compliant with, both as a prime and any subcontractor. We had a pre-bid meeting. There was lots of questions about the Responsible Contractor Ordinance and compliance with it. I believe there's about 10 to 12 people or companies that were interested in it. We received four bids. Of the four bids, none were compliant with the Responsible Contractor Ordinance. When the Responsible Contractor Ordinance was developed, I wasn't here for that, but I don't believe it contemplated a project such as this. The firms that do this kind of work typically don't have apprentice programs. We were unable to locate any classification in the state that dealt with this, so it wasn't exactly a surprise that all of them were non-compliant. Nevertheless, we did want to go through the process. It was an active ordinance, so before we just gave up, we wanted to make sure that we gave it a try. As I said, all four bids were deemed to be non-compliant. So we have three requests this evening. The first request would be to reject all bids from the project. The second request would be to authorize and to advertise an amendment to the Responsible Building Contractor Ordinance, which would specifically exempt this project and this project alone. It doesn't go beyond that at all. And the third would be to authorize us to advertise a rebid of the project under those new conditions. So the first sub-item under this agenda topic would be the rejection of all bids received for the project.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Schuster. Is there any questions, comments from the board on what you just presented? No?
Will we put out, will we put out additional bids down the road, or is this the end of the road on that?
No, so, so the recommendation would be first to reject all bids, second to re-adverti, to advertise an amendment to the ordinance to exempt this specific project. That's all. And then re-advertise concurrent with that. Then in the September meeting, you could approve the ordinance and also award bids that would not be a fault, that would not have to fall under the Responsible Contractor Ordinance. If we did that, we would keep to our timeline and be able to complete the project when we want to. Obviously, when you're dealing with a golf course, there's a window of time that we want to go ahead and hit. We don't want to be tearing up the golf course in, in the middle of spring or summer. So if it went beyond the timeline I just mentioned, our recommendation would probably be to hold off and wait a year before we did it.
Thank you.
A question. This will still be covered under prevailing wage. Whatever contractor's awarded this will still have to certify payroll.
Correct. Prevailing wage comes from the state. That's a state requirement. We can't exempt a state requirement. It would be covered under prevailing wage. Yes.
All right. Any other questions?
And once again, this is time-sensitive. If we don't get a move on with this in the fall, this goes into next year.
That is correct.
And we could end up right back here again next year.
Correct. You'll have to fix this at, at some point. Again, we could always go out to bid under the Responsible Contractor Ordinance, but we have no reason to believe that the results would be any different than what we have right now.
I mean, you did have pre-bid meetings with contractors to go over everything. With interested parties.
Oh, yes. There was significant interest in this. Yes.
All right. So all interested parties knew what the requirements were.
Yes.
Okay, I just want to be clear.
Yes.
All right. So, for public comment on this item here, we'll use this as a test run for later this evening with the water and sewer. Now, right now, I'd invite anybody who has any public comment about the land use matter of golf course irrigation project, whether it be regarding rejection of the bid, the re-advertising, or, and the authorization to advertise the bid again. Does anybody have any public comment at this time on that matter? Or any of those matters, I should say? None? Okay. So at this point, seeing no public comment, we're going to move to the motions. I'm going to go ahead and make the first motion, which is to reject all four bids for non-compliance with the RCO. Can I have a second?
Second.
Is there any questions or comments from the board before we vote? Okay. Seeing none, I'll call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. That motion carries 4-0. The next motion would be authorization, authorization to advertise amendment to Responsible Building Contractors Ordinance. Can, get a motion?
Motion.
And a second?
A second.
Any further debate comments, questions? Seeing none, I'm going to call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. And the last one is the authorization to advertise bid 2019-08, the golf course irrigation project. I'll make that motion. May I have a second?
A second, Mr. Chairman.
Any comment, questions? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. So with that, we are closed on the irrigation project.
We'll revisit that in September, correct?
Correct. September, there will be presumably two actions before you. One would be to adopt the ordinance which you just authorized advertisement for. The second would be to award the bid.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, now, we're up to public comment. Now, I just want to note, I know that a lot of people are here to discuss the water sewer. There's a separate public comment for that. The public comment period that we are upon right now is for non-agenda items, subject to a five-minute guideline, which we are going to enforce this evening due to the number of people who wish to speak. So, I would like, would anybody like to make public comment on non-agenda items at this time? First one I would ask to come up would be Mrs. Bobby Loftus, our tax collector. Good evening, Mrs. Loftus.
Good evening. Thank you very much. I'm here to remind the residents that if they want to pay their school taxes a discount, that the date for the final discount is August 30. I will be open on August 24, which is a Saturday, from 9:00 to 12:00, and on August 29 and 30 from 9:00 in the morning to 6:30 at night. After that, it goes into what's called the face period. I'd also like to give a brief accounting of the township and county. In township and county, I sent out 10,344 bills. 10,109 people have paid already. I only have 235 people left to pay, which is phenomenal.
That's amazing.
The money has really come in very good. And I haven't even sent final notices out yet. So we're doing really well.
Thank you.
Great job, Bobby.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Who else would like to make public comment this evening? Darlene? And then, next, we'll go to the lady.
Darlene Baker, 1537 Mulberry Circle, and I'm here for representing Friends of Warminster Parks. Supervisor Fescator did a really nice job of highlighting some of the events coming up. I just wanted to give a couple more details on two events. One, it's August, it's yard sale time. On the 24th, we're having a big community yard sale over at Warminster Community Park. So clean out your basements, clean out your attics. And for me, I'm currently in the process of moving my mom from a four-bedroom house into a one-bedroom apartment. Guess what? Your kids don't want you to keep your stuff. So bring it over to the yard sale. There's vendor applications, and they are due next Wednesday. So come out and get your applications. And for those of you who are great and have creative minds, come to the sale to buy stuff, and you can upcycle somebody else's thing and then have your own new treasures. And if you're looking for stuff for your dorm or college, I recommend you coming up. You might find some really good bargains at the yard sale. So come out and join us. It's a good time. I think we have a food truck coming out, so why don't you join us on the Saturday, the 24th. For the people that are buying, doors open at 8:00, and you come off of Bristol Road For the people that are buying, doors open at 8:00, and you come off of Bristol Road exit.
Awesome.
And Kathy also brought up the Hometown Hero banners. We already have 10 banners up in the park, and they look amazing. They're really nice. The pictures came out wonderful. So I encourage anybody to go and look at the existing banners. And if you have your own Hometown Hero, whether it's active duty or veteran, you can either go to the rec or you can go to our website, www.FriendsOfWarmminsterParks.org, and you can get the application, and all the criteria and information is on there. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Darlene.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Baker. Ma'am, would you like to make public comment? Please.
Hi, my name is Rhonda Abbott, and I use a mailing address, PO Box 4644, Cherry Hill, New Jersey, 08034.
Good evening.
My voice is louder than that.
Yes, yes.
And I traveled here today because there was an incident back in April 27, 2019. I was at a public accommodation, and the employees were not being very nice to me or assisted. So I wanted the police to come to get an incident number. And I walked across the street. There was a PetSmart nearby, and a young woman, she was very helpful. She called the police. I don't use the phone. She called the police for me, and she told me to go back over there and wait. I said to myself, this is going pretty easy so far. Well, the police officer came on duty. His name is Officer Paro, P-A-R, Joseph Paro, P-A-R-E-R. So he arrived, and I explained to him upfront that I was deaf. I asked him to write a paper. I said, I want an incident number. No can do. It's just a struggle, and my opinion is that's a struggle because this police department really has not paid attention to maybe the federal law, the Americans with Disabilities Act, in providing effective communication. You also have the state law, which would be under the Pennsylvania Human Relations Act. I did not ask for much from the police officer, the incident number, and to write on paper, and it's a struggle. So I ended up riding to the police department in frustration. I'd never been there before. Nobody followed me backwards by myself. And I wrote some long IA complaint, and I had to wait a lot of months. And I exchanged an email, too, with the chief, Chief Donnelly. Finally, I got a report back. It's just not satisfactory. So I get the pose instead of me contacting the ADA coordinator here. I've just came here to say that. As a deaf person, most deaf, no matter what state they live in, are aware that there's federal law that's passed, and there's a state law, and we're aware of our rights. And it's not that the deaf is a large population, but when these incidents do happen, the police owe us to be ready, and they're not. I don't know that this police department has a general order regarding communicating with a deaf and hard of hearing. The chief is using terms to me like hearing impaired. If he had interviewed me for my IA complaint, I thought that would have been more respectful. I could have shared things with him and definitely say deaf and hard of hearing, you know, say hearing impaired. Some police departments, not all, were aware that when the ADA was passed, they did make their policies, a written policy, because whether you have 10 officers, you have 100, you need everybody on the same page. To me, there's no excuse.
Mr. Schuster?
Yeah, thank you. I'll be happy to review the incident with Chief Donnelly and discuss any lessons learned from it, and also make sure that we are compliant with all laws and regulations. We certainly want to ensure that anyone that has need or, you know, for communications needs is able to be...
I do have some notes here. I don't have an incident report, because you have these very strict laws. There's very little transparency. Without an incident report, I'm missing some piece of the puzzle as to what the officer wrote. I see no reason to withhold an incident report. But one of the notes that the officer wrote to me is, well, he wrote in a note, "The business doesn't have to provide you with any effective communication." In that situation, the business could have written on paper. Officer Paro, he don't know what he's doing. He's making it up as he goes along. And it's the deaf that are being hurt.
Thank you, ma'am, for bringing that to our attention. And you will look into that?
Yes, I'll be discussing the matter with Chief Donnelly, and we'll be reviewing our policies. And, you know, every time we have an interaction with the public, there's always lessons to be learned, and if there are lessons to be learned for this, we seek to apply it and always become a better police department.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment, Mr. Hayes?
Good evening, everyone. Ken Hayes, 850 Lingo Drive. Just a quick reminder that the Environmental Advisory Council has invited the traffic engineer or representative from the traffic engineer. We're planning on having a nice, robust conversation about the traffic control, any improvements that we could make, smart traffic control, and possible grants. So that'll be the next meeting, Monday, August 26th, right here at 7:00 PM, and everyone's invited. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Ken.
Any other public comments working our way around LM? I'll get to everyone, I promise.
I just wanted to say that during the past two months, we have submitted write-to-know requests concerning the dates and the number of complaints, and I asked if I had made the complaints or if somebody else, other, just other made them, about the Wawa height bars. Those requests were denied. Why? Because there are no records of the complaints. That's because there were no formal complaints. Once I stood here and talked to you about the lack of maintenance on some of the flimsy chains that fell apart, that Wawa had hung up on the height bars, and twice in the past four months, I spoke about the legal, illegal, rather, illegal 16-foot height bar that Wawa constructed without the knowledge of the township, no permits, plans, or inspections. Why would Wawa spend the money to put up a knowingly illegal height bar? Almost twice the height agreed to in the 2017 court order signed by Judge McMasters. It was 16 feet approximately, the one they put up that was illegal. Was it to agitate the neighbors into complaining so Wawa could say to the township who did nothing about the illegal height bar that we must have a new agreement? These neighbors are impossible. It has been almost 60 days since the verbal agreement between Wawa and the township was announced by the solicitor. As decided by the solicitor, the height bars are down. Now, the trucks are rolling. There are no new signs, no new curbing, or no painted stripping, striping, rather. Wawa has won. The neighbors have lost, and it's obvious that it is okay with you, and you do not care about the residents of the township that were promised no commercial vehicles on that access road. Anybody have a comment or anything?
Yes, good evening. First and foremost, there was no verbal agreement reported. We have continued to report that we are in ongoing settlement negotiations with Wawa Police, and those height bars came down because they created a safety hazard for traffic circulation on the site. And that was determined by this board and consult with the board's consultants, including myself.
Well, you had said you recommended that they come down.
I recommended...
And you said you were talking to Wawa, and you gave us the things that they verbally said they might do. Have you gotten a written thing from them yet?
No. Again, we have to make sure that we're speaking with a certain degree of accuracy. What we reported...
We are speaking accurate. You have, you don't, not, you accused me of being the one about complaining about the height bars, and that was the reason why.
I have not made any, I'm not going to debate you this evening.
No, wait, I am going to, I don't, everyone hear you say that again?
I have not...
Because it was not me.
Guys, everybody, no cross-talk, please.
With all due respect, what we reported at the last meeting, or in fact, it was several meetings ago, were the terms that the board was interested in obtaining. I'm happy to report, as of mid-July, they have put together a proposal. It is being reviewed by the township, and the settlement negotiations continue, but there has been nothing definitive.
Okay, well, the last time, you had not heard anything in mid-July from them.
That's not accurate.
Well, I asked that at the meeting.
No, we reported at the last meeting that we had just received the proposal, I believe it was received on July 17, July 18, and that it's being reviewed by the consultants.
Well, the July, okay, what they were doing. But nothing has been done since then. Anything of formal come yet?
Again...
You were waiting for that.
We're in the process of reviewing the proposal. So things are being done. It's being analyzed.
Okay, well, I'll tell you...
Because the goal here, real quick, I don't mean to cut you off, but the goal here is to find a viable alternative solution to the traffic control, as opposed to the height bars that presented the health and safety issue.
Well, first of all, what you're doing is not going to stop the height of the vehicles. There's not a thing here that you're doing.
It's not half-contempt before investigation. Let's put it out in the field and see what happens, and then we're going to revisit it.
They've already done that, and you weren't around, so if you looked at the research...
And then we will revisit it within one year.
If you did your research, you would know they did it. Now, we do not want speed plates to put in, because they're only going to make noise. The trucks will have to gear down, up, to go over it. Fumes will be fuming over the fence that we breathe in in our backyard, because they've taken eight feet of the buffer zone. And when you gave them that buffer zone, they promised that nothing over eight foot two would go down that road. And now they change it, and all of a sudden, it's okay with everybody. I just wish some of you lived there to smell the gas from the trucks, the fumes, exhaust, and just hear them. But we do not want any speed plates, because it's not going to, speed was not a problem.
And can you identify who "we" is?
Michelle and I.
Okay, the two of you.
Yes. And there's a couple other neighbors, too, that have said that we've mentioned, too. But since I didn't ask their permission to use their names, I won't use them.
So with that being said, the board's still continuing to review the proposal. Once we come to a tentative agreement, we will report the terms at a public meeting, properly advertised. Thereafter, we will present that as an amendment to the settlement stipulation to the court. Bucks County Court of Common Pleas. And at that time, the settlement agreement, or the settlement stipulation, rather, will be accessible through write-to-know.
Well, first of all, why is it so urgent to go back to the court and get that part taken out for the height bars?
It's not urgent. It's the appropriate way to do it, because that settlement stipulation then will become a court order.
Well, it is a court order now, and you're doing nothing about it. Nobody did anything. They didn't find them. They did nothing about it. It is a court order now. So it's nothing new. But why take it out? Because if it doesn't work, then you have it as a stick to say to them, yes, you've got something that we got to work. Otherwise, they'll thumb their nose at the township and laugh.
That's not true.
It is true, because you haven't been here before, and you don't know.
With all due respect...
You don't know. Stop the due respect stipend.
Everybody, please, no cross-talk.
Let's focus on the solution to this.
All right.
Let's give the opportunity of this board and Wawa to negotiate a viable settlement. Let's get that before the court. Let's have that become an order.
No, let's see if it works first, before you go to the court. Let's see if it works, because there's trucks going down now. So the signs are there, and no trucks, so that doesn't bother. They still go down. And last month, there was a teacher from, I think she was a teacher from Council Rock that came and complained about the white lines at Perkins where the cars go over into there, where it signs says, say, off the, whatever you call that thing, there. And they still go on the shoulders, stay off the shoulder, and they still go on. And at that meeting, Mark McGee agreed, and so did Catherine, they have them near their homes, and they don't work. So this is what Wawa's proposing. So why are we proposing something that's not working any other place in the town? Because you know it's not going to work there. So let's get sensible about it. And I think you should ask the neighbors who live there, or at least Michelle and I, what are some ideas? We'll work with them. We didn't have to have a height bar. That wasn't our initial thing. We went along with everything until Wawa didn't do anything about it, and that's when the township, all of you people, thought that was a good idea. Now you say it's not safe. Now, we also brought up a thing about not safe. I said about other places in the township, and you said we'll address them as they come. All right? The bank on York Road got hit by a tractor-trailer truck, and it took the whole thing down. Did you any of you see the pipe size of the bar, the beam? I have a picture of it here. It's huge. It took two things down, the roof and all. That could have killed somebody. So maybe now we have to address that issue. I mean, you're starting to open a can of worms. Instead of saying to them, this is the way it goes, go to the King of Prussia Mall. They have parking on different levels. On the third level, they have a height bar, just like the ones that you have here, had here, and that has not been hit, because I checked with them all, and it doesn't get hit. There is nothing in front of it either. It's just the height bar, and that's, I mean, so it works in other places. It's just that Wawa doesn't want it. And you just came, and all of a sudden, you want it all down. So that's all.
All right, thank you, Lanier. I don't mean to cut you off, as any of, we have a large agenda.
No, but if he wants to think everything's so great, and he's the one that said that I initiated the thing, was part of it. I wasn't part of it at all, because the only thing we complained was the illegal, unexpected, unapproved bar that nobody made them take down. And he didn't want them to take it down right away.
You got it. Thank you, ma'am.
I'd like to know why.
All right, thank you. Mr. Hagie?
I'm Tim Hagie. I'm a general manager of the Warmminster Authority. I like to talk about meters.
Go for it, sir.
We've had about 8,000 of the meters changed out in the community. I thank everyone for scheduling that with our contractor, Lenigan. We have about 2,500 more to do. But I would like to say, some of those meters started changing out in March. We've physically changed them out, and who would have thought the hardest thing to do was get a software program? So the software program we need is to take the information from the account, put it with the new meter. We've been contacting the software vendor, the billing, for billing purposes. We've offered to fly the gentleman here so he can attend to the issue appropriately. But we are having some delay in getting that billing done. We're going to make it right with the customers, but I just wanted to, I want to let the people know that if they've got their meter changed out early, I think Jason, you had yours changed out early, and...
My bill showed up yesterday.
Where's my bill? It's coming. We haven't forgot you. But if it's larger than usual, we'll work something out, and we'll take care of that.
And Tim, those fellows were very efficient, too. They were at my house last week. They ran it out swiftly, very efficient.
Yeah, generally, it's about five minutes if there's no issues. So the other thing I'd like to talk about is construction work. The other thing we've done is we have a new website, and as part of that website, we've updated the projects. We have construction work starting very soon. It was supposed to have started a couple weeks ago, but the contractor keeps revising his schedule. And as that happens, we're going to continue to update that website so the residents who are affected can see as soon as we know. We're going to put it there. So we have streets that we're going to be replacing Water Main from Ivyland, on Brennan, from Ivyland to Stub, on Roberts, from Ivyland to Shurl, and we're going to do Spencer Lane, Penrose Lane, Fisher Lane, Murray Circle, and a small section of Phillips. I think it's from Fisher to Penrose, and maybe to Spencer. So that work's going to go on, but the important thing is for people to be aware, and that we will have that website updated for any additional information.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Hagie.
Additional public comment? Yes, sir. I'm just working my way across. I'll get to you, Ms. Ball.
This is Quick.
Yes, sir. Come on down.
I've noticed an uptake in tractor-trailer traffic between Bristol Road and Street Road on Valley Road. Just a comment.
Right. Could I just, for the record, can I get your name and address?
Sure. Bill Furman, 1031 Oakwood Drive.
So you're seeing an uptick in tractor-trailer traffic?
Yeah, and it's, I noticed it from Bristol to Street, Street to Bristol, and then there's nobody stopping in between, you know, there's no industry on that road.
Right.
So it's on Valley Road. That's just a comment.
No, I appreciate it, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Additional public comment? Ms. Crossen, then, Ms. Ball?
So it was just about the water meter. I was hoping I could help you. Patty Crossen, 209 Ann Lane. So I just had a question, the water meter, is there any way to keep it so you can read it? The light doesn't come, like, unless you shine a flashlight on it, is there any, it doesn't work? No, those didn't, no.
So it needs to be.
Mr. Hagy?
Tim, go on up.
Tim, yeah, sorry. I just, because I know you, you know, that's the thing.
Pass it down home.
Because when you walk by the old one, I could see if it was, you know.
So the new ones, to keep the battery working, it's solar, and you need a very bright light, like from your cellphone. If you shine on that solar panel, a little tiny solar panel, those readings will come up. One of the nice things that'll come up, if you have a leak, one of the most wonderful things about these meters is it's going to allow us to notify you that you've got continuous usage, let's say through the night, because these meters are actually going to read probably every 10 minutes. So if you have water running, let's say a toilet, that's top 10 problems, it's all 10 of them, a toilet running continuously, we'll be able to notify you.
Oh, you're called?
So, yes, absolutely.
Oh, because when I walk by it, I'm looking at it, it's just, there's nothing on it. So you gotta.
Yeah, so it's solar panel, so it doesn't use energy all the time. So if you need the display, just shine a bright light on it, takes about three or five seconds for it to charge up and it'll display. And one of the things that'll be on there, if you have a leak, is going to be a little faucet with a drip. So we'll be able to tell that there's usage. Doesn't make any of us happy if you get a whopping bill. So one of the other communities in the area, they changed the meters, and they found about 12% of the people had a leak that just ran continuously. So we'll have that ability with this modern technology of these meters.
Will that alert you, or somebody has to look for it?
No, it's going to alert us in the morning. When we come in, if your house happened to be running, let's say, two nights in a row, between, you know, 2:00 AM and 4:00 AM, you have constant usage, we're going to notify you.
Oh, good. Thanks.
Thank you for the question, and thank you, Tim.
Thank you for your patience, Ms. Ball.
Hi, Pat Boyle, 409 Grant Avenue. I have three quick things. The corner of Newtown Road and County Line Road, car index, they put up a beautiful new sign, they dug up all them cadem, left it there, dug up a big rock from somewhere, they've got like a foot of weeds, they've got graffiti on the boards they put on the building. It doesn't really say Welcome to Warmester.
Looks worse than the abandoned gas station.
It does, it does.
I called Amanda about it two weeks ago.
Yeah. Can we have the abandoned gas station back?
They got their demo permit before they got their building permits, so they're still getting their building permits approved right now. So as soon as those are approved, they'll actually start making it look not awful.
They put caution tape up today, because it's not safe for the kids. I mean, you know, it's got divots in it and stuff like that, there's a big wire coming out of the ground. And they put caution tape along the sidewalk on Newtown Road, it doesn't go around the property, it just goes right along this little bit of sidewalk, where the garden used to be. So it kind of doesn't caution anybody for anything.
Any idea how far out they are with those?
I'm not sure. I can find out, though, but I would assume.
Maybe we could expedite that.
I think we're waiting, the last I heard, we are waiting for them to respond back to the letter we sent out. But I'm not sure where we are in the process at the moment.
Is there a possibility we could have the caution tape along the whole?
Yeah, I can talk to the building.
It is dangerous, like she said.
I can talk to the building department and get them to reach out to the owner.
And to cut through to 7-Eleven, so people aren't going to walk around if they don't have to. The second thing I have is Frostville Water Authority thing. Couple months ago, several months ago now, they put a new line in along Newtown Road, through Cloverly, Hancock, over to Centennial and down, and you'd said, when they were done, they were going to pave it curb to curb. And there was a problem after they had paved the Newtown Road portion of it, and they dug up in the 300 block of Newtown Road. It's still dug up, there's still cones on the side of the road, it says no parking, and Cloverly, Hancock, Centennial, and everything's still a mess.
There we have.
Yeah, we'll have to look into that, I don't have any answer to that one.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry, you said 300 block?
The 300 block of Newtown Road, on the left side going north, is still, like, dug up a little bit with cones around it.
Okay.
Okay, and then they just paved down to Cloverly, and they didn't do anything else. And Cloverly's like really rough and terrible, because they just kind of did a quick patch. And then the last thing I have is on Hamilton, right where Grant hits Hamilton, there's the manhole cover, and then next to the manhole cover, there's this little.
I saw that yesterday.
Okay, and it's sinking, and somebody put in a little cone that looks like it's from a game.
It does.
But it's like, it's a yellow cone, and there's orange paint around it, so people can kind of see it. But it's sinking in, and that's not too cool. It doesn't make me feel safe.
You can look into that as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pat.
Thank you, Ms. Ball. Is there any other, yes, ma'am.
Our guest at 321 Evergreen Avenue, my tree next door to me has been worked on a little bit.
Okay.
Would you believe, on a Sunday, two pickup trucks and two trailers, landscape crew that her ex-husband works for, and then a young fellow came that went up the tree, and he cut down some of the branches, and a big one that goes over, had gone over the top of my tomato plants, landed on top of their house, and knocked down, and I just opened my door and said, is everybody okay? Because they had four men, the rope that was going to pull that tree over was wrapped around the trunk of the tree, and four landscapers hanging on to the rope to pull it at the right time, and it waffled on top of their house, 305's house. And I just thanked the Lord, but I yelled out, is everybody okay? And it really scared them, I think, because it not only waffled their house, but then came and whacked against the trunk that they were behind. It was a fiasco, and it was on a Sunday.
Wow.
So it's not the tree service, it's someone that's, what do you call it, working on the side, on a Sunday, for the landscaping crew. And he said they might be back that week, or maybe, there's two more Sundays, I figure, in August, the tree is supposed to be down by the end of August. Two more Sundays in August, and I just can't believe what a fiasco. And it's so exciting, but it's terrible, because I don't want anybody to be hurt. I want the tree down, but there's still branches that are dangerous to me on my property, and I just wanted to update you.
Please keep us posted.
Will do.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Is there any additional public comment this round? There is another round later on, after, towards the end of the meeting, besides the water and sewer presentation. Okay, I'm seeing none. I'm going to move on now to our consent agenda. For the consent agenda, I'm going to turn that over to Mr. Schuster.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Light consent agenda for you this evening. Item A is approval of the minutes from your July 18 meeting. Item B is approval of a document disposal resolution. Item C is approval of a traffic signal easement with Centennial School District, 666 Reeves Lane. Just a little explanation, this is for relocation of a traffic box, a traffic signal box. What we're trying to do is be a little bit proactive, because I think you're all aware that almost monthly, we're getting these traffic signal boxes taken out. So we're actively looking to relocate as many as we can. So I want to thank the school district for working with us on relocating this particular traffic box. Item D is an MOU with PennDOT regarding street road signal timing. They are looking at timing of lights up and down street road. This MOU would allow us to participate and work with their consultant. There'd be no cost to us, other than what our traffic engineer's time would take. And there's, they will make recommendations for cross-street timing changes on street road. Any implementation of those changes, though, would be at our cost. Item E is 1270 Murns Road, release number four from escrow, in the amount of $197,313.75, as recommended by the engineer. And item F is the Fuge, release number two from escrow, in the amount of $62,112.15, as recommended by the engineer.
Thank you, sir. Can I have a motion to accept?
Sir, move.
I'll second.
Any other questions, concerns?
You had a public comment session already, so you don't have to.
Okay. All right. Any questions? No? Okay. Seeing none, I'm going to call the consent agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, consent agenda passes. Now we're up to the finance report. For that, I'm going to turn it over to our treasurer, Mr. McKee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to put forth a motion to approve the July transfers, to approve the supplemental bill list dated July 31, 2019, in the amount of $1,050,983.57. Also, the bill list dated August 15, 2019, in the amount of $1,430,205.93.
All right. May I have a second?
A second.
Any questions or comment from the board? Any questions or comments from the public? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion passes. All right. Now we're up to the July financial statement.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As I've been steadily saying every single month, we are still generally tracking to budget. Nothing significant to report, other than my monthly reminder that there is a budgeted $2.3 million deficit, which will require some action to deal with prior to the end of the fiscal year.
Thank you. All right, now, item C. Was there any questions on the financial statement? I apologize.
Have we started preparing a budget for next year yet? I know you might be scratching the surface. We are getting into the summer here. I'm sure it can't be pretty.
No, it is not, no.
Any other? No? Okay. Item C, consider approval of Resolution 2019-20, Budget Amendment Number Three, Mr. Schuster.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As the board is aware, the Second Class Township Code allows for amendments to the budget in the fiscal year after three months have elapsed. This would be the third proposed budget amendment of the year. This would be Resolution 2019-20. The amendments is as follows. In the general fund, there'd be a minor transfer from one line item to another to cover tuition reimbursement costs. In the park fund, $40,000 would be transferred over from the tree escrow. In the sanitation fund, there'd be a reclassification, there's a line item in which we compensate the tax collector from. It is under a consultant line item, or really should be a salary line item. That's just a reclassification, it's accounting change, has no other implications other than that. In the capital fund, there is offsetting increase in revenue and expenditures for the grant-funded charging station, which you approved at a previous meeting.
Okay, is there any questions regarding the budget amendment? Any public comment on the budget amendment? I'm seeing none, I'm going to call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Do I, did I make a motion?
You can make a motion.
I'll make the motion, can I have a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion passes. All right. Now we're up to unfinished business, this is, we are now going to discuss the water and sewer systems.
And if you'll give us one moment, there are some people in the back room that are going to be joining us.
We're bringing people into the room, but also while we're doing that, I just want to let everybody know generally how we're going to proceed here. Once everybody's in the room, we're going to have a presentation by Mr. Schuster. After that presentation's done, I'm going to just set the public comment up, let you know what the three motions that are going to be considered this evening, and then invite public comment from the public. Once public comment is complete, then the board will debate, discuss, and vote on the motions. We're going to try to move through it as judicially as possible, make sure anybody who wants to talk has the opportunity to say whatever they do. All I ask is that if there's differing opinions, that we don't talk while someone else is talking. It happens rarely, but if somebody says something you don't agree with, you can certainly exercise your right to come up and say something else. I would also ask that we keep the cross-talk down in order to allow for our translation services. So just bear with us one moment while we get everybody in the room. Well, we need Greg to do the presentation. Are we ready?
Yep.
Okay. We're now ready to begin the presentation. For this, I'm going to turn the floor over to Mr. Schuster.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The board had previously been briefed on where we stand with much of this in a prior executive session. Just to give some recap, the board did authorize the PFM to go forward and do evaluation. Concurrent with that, we've been looking at all options. We've also been examining the current financial position of the township, that's been reported for the last couple years, of the challenges that we face. And having PFM do a follow-up value assessment, which you approved in an agreement, we thought would add some value to the analysis. So looking at the sewer and water systems as it stands right now, we have some very difficult decisions to make. The one option which is not available to the township is to do nothing. And we'll talk a little bit more about the finances in a little bit, but I just want to start off by giving what the recommendations are for the board to proceed. The first recommendation is to authorize negotiations to sell the water system to North Wales Water Authority. The second recommendation is to authorize negotiations to sell the sewer system to either Aqua or Bucks County Sewer and Water Authority. The third recommendation is to engage PFM for Phase Three of their services to advise us through this process. And the fourth recommendation is to hire a special counsel. We have, through this process, received numerous preliminary offers, and we'll go through those in a little bit. PFM is quite experienced in this matter. They have done a number of these transactions, and would request that they continue to assist us throughout this process. And the hiring of special counsel is not intended to be a slight at our current solicitor, but this is a very specialized process, and there's only a couple firms out there that have the experience needed to move forward. So the big question is why? Why are we going ahead and looking at this? And there's several reasons to talk about. The first one is financial. Based on our current revenues and expenditures, we will run out of funds in 2020. This is something that I've been saying up here for a while. PFM has confirmed this in their analysis. This is real. This township is running out of money, and we will be bankrupt next year. That's why I said doing nothing is not an option. Second thing to keep in mind is the tax rate and the limitations we have there. Even if the township were to raise the mill rate on the general fund to 19 mills, which is the absolute maximum it could be by the Second Class Township Code, you would need court approval above 14, but 19 is the absolute highest. That would be an approximately eight-mill jump. We would still run out of money, probably in 2021. We would eke by and basically get through barely 2020, but in 2021, we would have exhausted our fund balance and exhausted our operating reserves. Another thing to remember is what you have seen on paper, and we've talked about this many times, when it comes to the pension, is actually worse than what you see on the paper. We've been using an assumed rate of return of 8%, which is definitely too high. I don't know what the magic number is, but I can tell you 8% is too high. Additionally, we've been on the smoothing method, which has been kicking the can down the road. There was, for a brief moment in 2017, for the police pension, we were able to do the market value, but for following years, we were unable to do so. These are the numbers, I know they're a little hard to read up there, but this is our projections that's put together by PFM on our fund balance. Again, this is for the general fund, and as you can see, in 2020, or sorry, 2019, the current year, we have a $2.3 million budgeted deficit. In 2020, the budgeted deficit goes up to about $3.8 million, and it exhausts all of our funds. all of our funds. And obviously, it just keeps getting worse year after year. Second reason about why, and this is related strictly to the water system, is the township's water source. As you know, most of the wells are not in production. You're going to need millions of dollars to put filters on all those wells if you want to put them back in production. And we know that the Navy is still irresponsibly not willing to fund any of that unless it exceeds the health advisory limit. There is an agreement that the authority has with North Wales for surface water, but that can be terminated in seven years. So, in seven years, we don't know exactly where the water's coming from. I don't mean to say or suggest that North Wales would terminate that agreement, but we just don't know. Nor do we know if they would ask for a rate increase. So, there is uncertainty when you look out after seven years. A sale to North Wales would lock in the water supply. That's the same water we're getting right now. There's really be no change in the water quality. The third major reason why is talking about Act 47. On January 1 of 2020, Warminster will meet several of the criteria to enter Act 47. You only need one criteria to enter it, but we will meet multiple ones. When in Act 47, the state appoints a coordinator. The coordinator will come in, develop a plan. There's a process to do that, and the township will adhere to that plan. When that occurs, there is loss of local control. I can't sit here and tell you what a coordinator would recommend. That's going to be up to that person. But things you may see is, they may tell you to, you know, decrease an expenditure, you know, a budget, say it's the police department, say, decrease it 20%. You can only spend $6 million or $5 million. How you spend it's up to you, but that's the limitation. Or they could dictate the sale of assets. Now, when these things occur, bear in mind, we have no control, or very limited control, I should say. And this is the situation that we would like to avoid, that if we have the ability to solve our fiscal issues now and do it in a responsible manner, then I would recommend we take that path.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes?
I'll interrupt you for one second. Act 47 is bankruptcy.
So...
For all intents and purposes.
For all intents and purposes, it is. You need the state's permission to enter into bankruptcy. Act 47 is the step that the state has put in place to really prevent bankruptcy, so that there would be certain loans and other financial instruments in place to help us get through the period. But they would come in, and they would solve the problem one way or the other. So, yes, for all intents and purposes, it's the state's version of bankruptcy. When I looked at all the options on the table and where we stood, you know, I came up with five criteria that really guided my thought process in making a recommendation. The criteria had were as follows. First, any action should allow for appropriate funding of the pension and OPEB trusts. Right now, the pension is currently underfunded. It's a combination of being on the smoothing method and using an 8% assumed rate of return. So, we have quite a significant unfunded liability, and it continues to grow. OPEB is a problem which is growing every single year. OPEB, for those that are not familiar with it, stands for Other Post-Employment Benefits. The main one of that is post-retirement healthcare. We have, through their contracts, given employees, certain employees or certain classifications of employees, very generous post-retirement healthcare, and that is very costly. The appropriate thing to do is to treat it just like a pension. You know you're going to have this expense after they retire. You should put away money as they are in active employment. Let that money grow, and then you could pay the retirement benefits out of the OPEB fund. We're not doing that. What we're doing right now is called PEGO. We're treating retirees as active employees. This is $200,000, $300,000 right now, but it is growing every single year. And what I don't want to see happen is solve the pension issue and then be back here two years later dealing with this growing OPEB issue. So, that was the first criteria. And I should also mention that I did talk about the 8% assumed rate of return. The analysis that you're going to see decreases that to 6.75%, a much more reasonable assumed rate of return. The second criteria was to keep the overall tax and fee burden reasonable. The township, the municipal side, has not increased taxes since 2011. And again, for those of you that are about to jump up, there are three different levels of taxation. There's the school, there's the township, and there's the county. I'm speaking only about the township. The township has not increased taxes since 2011, and we do know there's been increases elsewhere, and we want to be mindful of that in any solution. It'd be very easy to go say, "Let's go sell to the highest bidder, get the most amount of money we can," but the increase in rates could be significant. So, that is a factor that we have to keep in mind. The third criteria is significantly increase the fund balance and ensure financial, future financial flexibility. We're going to, we're in the process of depleting our fund balance right now. A healthy fund balance is good for a number of reasons. One, that's your safety blanket. In case anything happens in the future, you always have that money in there to lean back on. Second, if the township were ever to take on a major project, that's something the rating agencies do look at when giving you a rating. Third, if the fund balance is significant enough, which we're proposing that it would be, the interest generated from that fund balance could have a significant impact in the general fund as a revenue stream. That'll help set the township up for future financial stability. The fourth criteria would be to lock in a clean water supply beyond the current agreement with North Wales. I already spoke to that earlier, but for quite a number of years, the township, the residents, have been receiving water which had a contaminant in it. We're still learning more about it. The PFO/PFO situation is well-known to everyone, and we're fortunate that we are now on clean water from North Wales, but we don't know the damage that's been done. We want to ensure that in the future, we'll always have a clean water supply for the residents. And the fifth criteria is to be defensible, and I mean that in two sense. The first is that all these numbers have to make sense to the average resident. We're going to be asking something more from the residents as part of this deal. It's impossible to fix the township's financial issues without asking something of the residents. But we have to make sure that we can explain why we're doing it, what the benefits are, what the concerns are, and while they may not agree with some of it, they can at least understand it. The second part of be defensible is in a legal standpoint. There were, there was one scenario that was looked at, which, although financially possible, and still not the best solution financially, did have serious legal issues with it. So, I want to make sure that anything we do is defensible in a legal standpoint. And I did come to the conclusion, based on the numbers, the analysis that was done by PFM, that a sale of both the sewer and the water system was the only scenario that met these criteria. A little bit more into the details on the water system, there's a recommendation to sell to North Wales, and I should say that all the numbers you are seeing right now are preliminary. We have not sat down and done any negotiations, nor have we done due diligence. So, there's still a process to go through, which could adjust these numbers, up or down. We have to talk about terms and conditions and other things regarding the sale, timings, all those will come into play. So, there's still a lot more work that would have to be done if you authorize us to move forward. So, the preliminary offer from North Wales is just shy of $36 million. You would see an immediate rate decrease on the water side by about 40% in 2020. That would be a decrease from 5.21 per 1,000 gallons down to 3.60 per 1,000 gallons on a three-year lock. North Wales would also put an additional three-year cap after that at $3.96 per 1,000 gallons, and they will guarantee that they will never charge more Mr. Customers anymore than their current customers. So, they're not going to gouge us or take advantage of the situation. The residents would pay exactly what the other customers of North Wales are paying. And again, it does lock in a clean water supply. On the sewer system, Aqua had a preliminary offer of just shy of $55 million with an initial increase of 60% in sewer rates beginning in 2022. Bucks County Water and Sewer also had a preliminary offer of $50 million with an initial increase of approximately 44% in 2020. As I stated earlier, both of these offers require due diligence and negotiations to determine the best solution. We're obviously looking at rates versus sale price, and we have to look carefully at what the terms and conditions of any sale is. So, the recommendation is to examine both of these offers, not honing in on one at this time. I tried to boil this down into one slide on how you could explain this to the public, and it's not perfect, but this is the best I think I can do right now. And I use the Aqua offer on the sewer because that has the higher rate structure. So, this is, you know, the numbers, if anything, would be lower than this. But the short summary is, in 2025, under the proposed assumptions, the average taxpayer will have to pay an extra $133 per year in fees. In return, they will see no increase in the general fund mill rate, financial stability, a clean water supply, and an estimated additional $45 million in the bank. This is how that would play out over a number of years going up to 2025, and this is a breakdown, year by year, of water bill, sewer bill, and tax bill. Again, we're just talking about municipal taxes right now. What would happen, and again, we're still using the Aqua example, and that's not because we're leaning towards Aqua in one way or the other. It's simple because that would be the highest cost. So, the numbers would be better than this if we went with another option. But you'll see, the initial step would be in 2020, residents would be paying $142, $143 less per year. Same with 2021. And then, from 2022 to 2025, you would see a ramp up from $76 more per year up to $133 per year. And I just want to pause for a second. I want to turn over to PFM because there's a, you know, I just want to make, ensure that everyone's aware how this all works and where's, you know, where's all the money going to help make this scenario possible. So, is it, so I'd like to introduce, we have Scott Shear and Ben Kapstein that can explain that a little bit. Just go right to the podium, Matt. He's got the mic right there at the podium.
Good evening. Thanks again for having us here. So, you know, again, depending, there's lots of assumptions built into our models. There's lots of assumptions built into the preliminary proposals that were received from the various utilities. But kind of in the numbers that we're showing here, as far as how the proceeds are tentatively set to be used, the bulk of that is going to be going into, fully fund the pension plan and the OPEB trust that your manager had mentioned. That's roughly, say, about $40 million or so, which is going to be allocated to doing that. Not only is that money going to go into the pension plan and fully fund it, but at the same time, it's also going to be used to reduce that discount rate that's been mentioned a couple of times. Right now, it's, historically, it's been at 8% for the township, but the goal is to get that down below 7%, and our models are showing 6.75%, which, just from a township perspective, whether in Pennsylvania or across the nation, is a much more prudent level to be at. And when you also compare that to your actual investment returns of the pension plan, some of those forecasts, whether it's near-term or long-term, that's a much better match. Because again, after all the analyses and all the discussions that you all have been having and we've been having, we don't want to see the township in a similar situation two years from now or five years from now with the pension plan, because that obviously is something that is a lot of the municipalities are laser-focused on, because that's what's causing a lot of the financial issues. So, not only are we looking to fully fund it, but again, also lower that discount rate to provide for more financial stability going forward. Not just the financial stability for the township's budget, but also the stability of the pension plans to know that the pensioners are actually going to be receiving their benefits in the future as well. So, it's kind of on both sides. So, again, that's probably about half of the use of the proceeds, assuming the option up here where both the water and the sewer sold. Then the balance, say, the second half of the amount will be put into some sort of trust fund. I use that word kind of loosely because there's some legal restrictions to that. But basically, a fund where then the models that we have built are utilizing the interest earned off of that fund, basically to go into the general fund to help balance the budget, you know, for a very long time in the future. So, we're not necessarily utilizing the principal amount or the corpus of that fund, but again, just utilizing the interest, which is a technique that other municipalities have done across the Commonwealth when they sold their utility systems as well. These are our models as of now. As the process continues, the negotiations continues between the townships and the different utilities, we're going to continue to refine our models. But for now, that's sort of the general, two main uses of the funds. To fund the pension plan, lower the discount rate, fund the OPEB trust as well, and then also utilize the interest earnings from the balance.
So, we would see a reduction in this exploding MMO that we've been talking about up here for several years now. Basically, that would shrink because we would fund the pension and bring it under control by a lower rate of assumed rate of return. Plus, the one, whatever we generate through the principal back into the general fund, you're looking at a huge turnaround into that general fund, which is now broke, which is now unsustainable.
We're looking at close to about a $7 million turnaround annually.
Into the general fund?
Yes. Because you saw the one slide up there, sort of the base case was about a $7 million annual deficit. This plan would get us back to basically unch, along with that large balance as well. However, I will caveat, I think maybe it was already in one of those slides, is there's still going to need to be a lot of discussions amongst all of you with us going into the future. If expenditures, you know, increase, you know, you need more things, the model's going to need to be updated. Discussions are going to have to be had about how to keep the revenues and expenses in line with each other. Again, we don't want to see things get out of balance again, so there is going to need to be kind of a lot of due diligence on an annual basis that your manager will be leading to make sure that, you know, on an ongoing basis, expenditures are matching revenues.
And that was a perfect segue into my last slide.
There you go.
Which is actually talking about the limitations of this proposal. So, to piggyback on what Scott just said, the first limitation is we are talking about stabilizing the general fund based on current operations. If this board or a future board wishes to make a change, if you wish to embark on some new initiative, if you feel it's appropriate to increase the size of the police department, that's fine. However, there's going to have to be a way to pay for that, most likely through mill rate increases. So, just keep that in mind. This is not designed, nor can it ever be, a solution to every single financial problem, nor can it ever be used to go down some kind of wish list and spend on anything that you feel is appropriate, because you will find that, although it is a lot of money, from a municipal standpoint, you can go through it very quickly if you are undisciplined. Continuing with that is that everything we've talked about here is for the general fund. If you look at other funds, if you wish to have certain initiatives, whether it be land purchases, park improvements and maintenance, or paid firefighters, whatever it may be, that would have to be paid for out of those funds, and that would probably necessitate a mill rate increase. So, I just want to make sure it's crystal clear what the limitations are of the proposal that's before you.
So, for example, the proceeds from this would not be used for, like you mentioned here, the paid firefighters. That's something that may occur in the next five to 10 years. That's something we'd have to fund solely through the fire fund. Is that correct?
It wouldn't have to be solely through the fire fund, but that would be the initial starting point. We could increase the mill rate on the fire fund, not to get too technical. There is a limitation that although you can go up to three mills on the fire fund, only one mill of that can be spent on salaries and benefits. So, there may have to be an infusion from the general fund to help offset that. But the general premise is the same. If you're looking to increase municipal services, there's going to have to be revenue on how to pay for it.
Got it. Got it. All right. Was there any more to the presentation?
Now, that concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Before I open to the public, any questions? Just questions for Mr. Schuster? Okay. So, what we're going to do now is we're going to open up public comment. What we'll do is, we have Mr. Schuster here, we have representatives from Bucks County, from North Wales, from Aqua, we have PFM here. If you have any questions at this point, too, we'll try to answer any ones we can. If you'd like to make a comment, come on up. We're going to try to adhere to the five-minute guideline. Everybody who wants to be heard will... will be heard. After the public comment session is finished, then we'll proceed with making the motions and voting on the motions. But, we want to hear what everyone has to say first. So, I'd like to invite the first gentleman who just raised his hand, please come on up. I would ask that when you begin speaking, that you provide your name and address. We do that because we put it as part of the record for the minutes.
Yeah. Saddington, 1164, Lord College Drive in Wormminster, of course.
Thank you, sir.
I have some concerns, comments, issues, and stuff that I would like to understand, get comments on.
Sure.
Mrs. Friedman, when she opened the water company here in Wormminster, when there was only a few houses on Worthington Drive and only a few on Lord College, she did a great job. Township took it over, and they have a great job. We've had some great water. I can't understand why we have to sell the golden goose that's laying the eggs. I have the concerns about what's going to happen to the people that work for the township and the Water Authority, so on and so forth. Why do people want to buy it? You buy any investment so you can make money on it. They're not going to take something that's going to be a loss. They're going to give you a rate that's good for a few years, and after that, the rate's going to go up. Our water is good. The township may have to look at other things, whether they impose a wage tax, or they have to raise the taxes, or increase the water. Their concerns, I've lived here when there was only, like I say, a dozen houses on Worthington Drive and four or five houses on Lord College. It's a big concern. The township, I don't know if they like to spend money, or they don't use their common sense and they spend it. Maybe they have to check their wages versus their pension. You can't do everything. You can't give top wages and give a great pension fund. Most of pensions are set, and you have to follow state guidelines and so on and so forth. But, they don't control the wages. Whether you have to put a wage tax on, or you're going to have to decrease the wages, my solution would be, instead of just selling it, at least put it on the ballot so that people have a chance to vote on it. And better yet, I think you should put out a postcard, a double-flip postcard, so they can mark it and send the other half back. So, that way, just the homeowners, the taxpayers are putting their comment on whether it should be sold or not be sold. The people that just live here, they don't pay those taxes and stuff. So, I think they're the comments that I have and the issues that I would like to see resolved. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hayes?
Good evening again. Ken Hayes, 850 Lingo Drive. So, we all knew this was coming. You know, when I was on the Budget Committee, we knew what was, this day was coming. So, here we are. A couple of questions I have. So, with the sale proceeds, you're going to fully fund the pensions, correct? And then, the remaining balance is going to go into a trust fund? I guess my question is, how are you going to safeguard that?
Sure. There are legal mechanisms that can be put in place, but there is nothing that this board can do that can't be undone by a future board. The law is pretty clear on that, and the solicitor can jump in if he disagrees. But, there, again, we'll try to put in whatever protections you possibly can. But, at the end of the day, I can't give any guarantee that a future board would make a very bad decision and try to take the principal out of that account.
Right. Because I know there's, I believe Coatesville is in that situation right now, and they are entering into Act 47 because they made some bad decisions.
All right. We could protect it to a degree and make it onerous on a future board to undo it, but they would still have the power to undo it.
All right. Well, then, my next question, Stormwater, Stormwater Management, what happens? Because I know the WMA was going to take that over, or you were in negotiations to do that. So, what happens to that? And is that going to be a pass-through cost to the residents as well?
Yeah. We'd have to figure that out the moment it's taking, being taken care of through our general fund. We do have the option of keeping it in-house and passing, you know, a fee to go ahead and do that, very similar to what we presume the municipal authority would have done. There's also the option of leaving the authority in place strictly as a stormwater authority.
Okay. So, then, there'll be an additional fee associated with that as well, assuming?
I think there's going to be additional fee no matter what happens. It doesn't matter if it's a township function or an authority function.
So, I guess my question for PFM would be, what is your assumed rate of return on this investment, on the remnants of the sale?
We were assuming between, Scott, please. We were assuming between 2 and 2.5%.
2 and 1/2, 2 and 1/2%?
Yep. And again, this is meant to be subject to change.
So, it could go down?
It could go down, could go up.
And you're also assuming about a $7 million per year into the general fund? So, it's revenue neutral? Basically, based on your chart, it'll be?
The $7 million into the general fund, that's, we're showing a balanced budget under these scenarios because funding the pension plan will be reducing that annual obligation to now have revenues equal expenditure. So, there's not $7 million coming from that fund every year. It's on the day of closing, once the pension is funded, we're going to see a substantial drop in the MMO, the municipal, minimum municipal obligation, that's going to make it more of a balanced budget.
Right, right. So, how much revenue do you expect to go to the general fund through this investment?
About a million, about a million dollars.
About a million dollars? Okay. So, I guess, I mean, I have a load of questions here, but I'm going to keep it brief. I'm sure everyone else wants to speak. But, I guess one of the main things that I'm concerned with is what's stopping North Wales, or Aqua, or anyone from selling this, again, at a profit?
Yeah. I mean, that's a valid concern, and I know some of the other municipalities that have gone through this process have put protections in place to go ahead and address that. That's something we would have to go ahead and deal with negotiations on all the terms and conditions. That's being a big part of it. A huge part of it is the employees.
Well, absolutely. That was one of my next questions.
Well, I'm getting ahead of you there.
Yeah, you are.
You know, the board, you know, has made it clear that they want to ensure that employees move over to whoever purchases the system. We'd hope to have the cooperation of the municipal authority in doing this. We'd love to have them at the negotiating table because we don't know all the benefits, and it's not going to be apples to apples. We have to make sure that when, if this moves forward and employees do move, that we're able to make sure that they have comparable compensation, which is why we'd love for the authority to work with us on this.
All right. One last thing. So, all these analyses that have been put together, the actual numbers, they are going to be available to the residents?
Nothing proprietary about it, right? You know, so?
I mean, well, I mean, I think there's a lot of people here that would be interested in actually seeing.
Just so you know, it's, I think, a 67-tab Excel spreadsheet. You know, I know it doesn't scare you, but...
No, not at all. But, no, I'm just curious because, I mean, I think when you come to this, this is a big decision, and I think the residents should actually see that.
Agreed.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hayes.
Thanks, Ken.
Thank you, sir. Would anybody, Jack Diamond, please. Mr. Diamond, how are you tonight, sir? Not responding. That's not good.
This whole process is moving too fast, and the fact, the way this is mentioned on the agenda, says to me that the word, this is already a done deal. There's no second guessing.
I would disagree with that characterization, sir. We've been talking about it for almost two years, and...
Talking about it, but this is, this is, this is a dramatic point, and you're being climatic a little too fast because, as the previous speaker said, people have not been seen enough to fully digest it. Now, my basic point is that everything is referenced, the budget, the whole, if, the defined benefit pensions is the root of the whole problem. The entire country is facing the same problem, and they don't have, they don't have water and sewer authorities to sell. The rest of them seem to be paddling along. There's nothing any one township can do on themselves. The state has to take the first step. They must break the defined benefit pensions, have them rolled over, all existing defined benefit pensions, rolled over into 401Ks. Now, I got lost at a turn in the road when Mr. Schuster said, "Well, 8% return, that's a little too high. Should go down to 6.5." Well, if we're having to, if we can't make ends meet, when it's, when you project 8.5 and you're not getting it, projecting a lower amount, that's not going to solve anything. It's a projection. That still doesn't put any money in your pocket. The best I can make of it at this point in the game is I should not, I don't think you should make a decision other than get this information, put it on the website, make it available to people. And if it comes to, I think, maybe a referendum, or the first gentleman said, maybe send cards out, but it could be on a referendum. I think the public should have a little more input on this and more perspective of the fact that this is, the defined benefit pension pickle is the root of the whole problem. And the state of California, for instance, or the state of Pennsylvania, they're ignoring it. They're just, they're just wallowing along. Our, this is all brought to a head because you want to, you want to fully fund the defined benefit pensions. I say, let the defined benefit pensions, not just tread water from year to year as best we can until the state makes a definitive first step.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Diamond. I would, I do want to note that in 2013, our non-uniformed employees were moved, all new employees after January 1, 2013, is that the correct date, Mr. McKee, are on, no longer on a defined benefit, but are now on defined contribution. However, our uniformed employees, our police, that pension is governed by the state law, correct? And it's, I understand your point, but it's not something that we have the power to impact in that manner.
Is the state, as people can hear, Mr. Diamond said, the state could change it in a two-step process. Yes, sir. The other thing I want to also make clear tonight is that if, when we go to vote on motions tonight, the motion would be to negotiate, not to sell. So, everything you're hearing tonight, over the next, I would imagine that we wouldn't get further in the process to finish the negotiation process for quite a few months. This is the first discussion in a process. This is not the last. This is not, by any means, the final. And many of the points that everybody's making tonight are very valid points that need to be discussed. That being said, I don't want to inject too much myself into this. I'd like to invite more public comment at this time. Ms. Boyle?
Hi. Pat Boyle, 409 Grant. We have quite a crowd here tonight, and a couple of the people from Anne's Choice came over, and they couldn't even get into the room. And so, they asked me if I would read the statement and hand it in to you. Sure. It says, "To the town of Wormminster Supervisors, do not sell the Wormminster Water Authority or the sewer system. The public should control the systems that serve the public. We do not want a private or other organization to have control over the chemicals in our water, or to set the price of water or sewer service for our town." They did this after dinner last night and have three pages that they wanted me to hand in, but I also have a question.
Yeah. Thank you for sharing that with us. Yes, please go ahead with your question.
If we sell to a for-profit, they're going to spend $50 million to buy something. They want that $50 million back. So, basically, how much am I paying for that, for them to get their $50 million back? There's 10,000 customers or something like that?
10,000, approximately 10,000 repairs.
Okay. So, that means that I'm on the bill for like $500,000, basically? Is my math bad?
Well, I mean, if you want to contribute $500,000, we can talk.
I wish I had $500,000.
No. So, I think the best example that I can give was in the presentation when I talked about, you know, that one little paragraph about $133. So, that was...
I've been through an Aqua buyout, okay, where I lived last time, and my rates were not going to go up. Nothing was going to happen. And then, they came in, and everything was wrong that they didn't know about, and our rates tripled in about a year and a half.
And I'm not saying your rates are not, in fact, I'm telling you, your rates will go up.
Right.
You know, so, we're being upfront about that as part of the deal, that while the water rates would significantly decrease, the sewer rates would increase. So, yes...
And I also have a question on your first slide, if it had to do with money and the budget.
Okay.
If you go back to this one, is that an accumulative total on the bottom, or is that an annual total?
That appears to be cumulative. Is that correct?
Yes. Okay. So, what would be the annual total, the one above it?
The line above that, yes.
Line above that. So, that's without paying off the pension or with paying it off?
That's continuing on our, what we're doing right now.
No payment.
Right now. So, so...
Yes. That's at the 8% discount.
Yeah. That's doing exactly what we're doing right now.
So, not paying the bill that we owed for all these years that we've never paid?
That is correct.
Okay. So, it's, so if we don't have that bill, what happens to the budget? If we don't have that pension bill, what happens to the budget?
So...
That's not being shown, or is that being shown somewhere?
So, that's baked into, in the total expense line item, the bill for the, what we'll call the MMO is in there. So, if we were to just take out that MMO, as it stands right now, I think just in the police pension alone, we would save, now, it's $1.6 million on the smoothing method. I believe it jumps up to about $2.2, $2.3 million on the market value method, and it's even higher than that when you put in appropriate assumed rate of return.
Right. I understand that. So, you're saying right now, we're paying $1.6 million, and it says that next year, we're going to be $1.9 million, the following year, $42? I'm sorry, I can't see. I have new trifocals. We have to deal with my head.
What's this year's MMO? 2.7?
We have received this year's MMO, but the one we're dealing with right now on the smoothing method for the police pension is $1.6 million.
And so, when the smoothing method is what we're doing, and judging this one, this year's smoothing method probably going forward, or no? I mean, like...
No, no. So, what we're proposing is that if we did have a...
For these numbers here?
These numbers assume, for this chart right here, that we're not making any changes, that we would continue on the smoothing method, that we would continue at 8% assumed rate of return.
Right. And, okay, so it says that in five years, we're going to be $5 million in debt. Is that what this says?
No, that's saying that, so, if you were to read this, we'll look at 2019. So, that's saying that based on the budget, we would lose $2.3 million. We have a $2.3 million deficit, and we would end with approximately $1.3, $1.4 million in the bank. When you switch to 2020, the deficit becomes $3.8 million. And then, in the fund balance, you would have negative $2.4...
So, it's not an annual number? It's a compounded number?
So, that's...
I thought you said the bottom line was the compounded number.
The bottom line is your fund balance. So, the...
The one above that, the surplus deficit, keeps growing every year?
Yes.
Okay. To like, to like 42, 4.2 million, 4.3 million?
Yes.
And if we're paying 1.2, how does it keep getting bigger if we take out the 1.2? There's still 3 million there.
I don't know where you're getting the 1.2.
I mean, 1.6, you said.
Okay.
If we take out the 1.6, you're still talking about 3.8.
So, we're not, there are other expenses in there that are growing as well.
Right. So, it doesn't resolve this, is what I'm saying, if you just take out the pensions.
Oh, you're correct. Yes. And if we keep going as we're going, if you were to just simply say, "Hey, we're not going to pay our pension anymore," it doesn't solve the entire problem. That's why the proposal that they're putting forward, that we're putting forward, says we are going to fund the pension so that we actually can remove that, the unfunded liability cost from these line items.
But, there's still other major problems.
Oh, sure.
Okay. And then, we're supposed to get that money from where?
Well, again, that would come as an influx from the amount of money that's left over in the quote-unquote trust fund. That would contribute a million-plus dollars a year into the general fund. But, you would see liabilities decrease. The unfunded liability for the police pension would go away. The unfunded liability for the non-uniform pension plan would go away. The pay-as-you-go health benefits for retirees would go away. So, those three line items...
And that's $4 million a year?
It fluctuates year to year. Do you have an estimate on...
On the unfunded, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah. Let's just start with unfunded, yeah.
If you take those three items, is that equal to the $4 million deficit in the years to come?
No, because you have, you have to add in the interest that Greg's talking about. So, that extra $45 million that's going to be sitting in a trust, the interest that spins off of that is 1.2 million. Depending on the interest rate, that also helps.
And who's managing that trust?
That would be the township.
The township itself would manage it?
Well...
Or hire somebody to manage it?
Possibly.
Most likely, it would go into a pligot account. We're very limited in what we can do with non, with funds that are not invested in either an OPEB or a pension trust. The law puts strict limitations on that. So, I'll probably... So, it'll probably go in a pligot fund. There's other investment vehicles that are CDs or like CDs that we can go ahead and employ, all of which are relatively low interest, you know, 2%, 2.5%.
Okay. So, we get the $1 million a year from the trust fund, and we save $1,006 from what we're paying out in the pension fund, and we're going to save a million?
You're not, how should I put this?
Okay. It's not going to be there that it's...
You're saving more than one, because the 1.6 is the absolute minimum payment to make.
I understand that.
And what's happening is, year after year, it's snowballing.
Right.
Because we keep pushing the unfunded liability...
It's been snowballing since 2007.
Exactly. So, I just want to make it sound that if you take that 1.6, that it solves the problem.
I understand that.
It doesn't.
But I just want to make sure that we're doing away with that $4.5 million in whatever year that is, 2024, 2025. Does this get rid of that deficit?
Yes. It gives you a balanced budget, which means revenues equal expenditures.
Okay. Because it doesn't say that on paper anywhere.
Well, because that's if we continue as we are right now.
Right. That's your estimate of what will happen if we continue right now?
If we do nothing, yes.
Okay. But what is the est, where is it on paper, what the estimate is?
Oh, we can certainly show that. That's in the model that was created.
Yeah. I mean, that would be something I think we would need to see.
Absolutely.
Well, I think, I apologize, I didn't mean to interrupt. I think Mr. Schuster has discussed with me having public information sessions just around, not so much around the water, sewer, sale negotiation, but about the budget, the issues with the pension, and having a dialogue there where we're just talking about that.
Because I can't see selling the water and sewer if we're not getting anything out of it. You know, if we're not, if it's just, we're just going to pay off one bill, put some money into some investment thing, and the budget's still going to go crazy out of whack, and we've lost control over our water and sewer, and we're just as deeply in debt.
It's designed to have a general fund balanced budget.
With a surplus?
With a sizable fund balance, yes.
And no control over our water and sewer? And that's what we have to decide?
So, part of it is giving up local control, yes.
And possibly doing it to a for-profit.
I'm sorry?
And possibly selling it to a for-profit.
That's one of the options, yes.
Thank you, Ms. Boyle. Is there any additional public comment? Yes, John. Oh, sorry, I didn't see you. Judy, I'll get you next.
John Prio with 674 Joseph Avenue. I think what, the numbers are there. I like everything when it comes to looking at the actual numbers and what you're going to get on your return. But I think what people are failing to understand is if we do this, you're not going to have a tax increase unless, down the road, we institute a new fire program or something like that. So, your property taxes shouldn't go up, and I think that's what you guys are aiming to do as well, and fix the problem so we can be fiscally solvent in the township. I believe that's correct. I think, I don't think we're, we're not going to raise the millage for the property taxes. And we haven't since 2011.
That is correct as it relates to the general fund. Again, there are other initiatives that if the board chooses to move forward on, would cost money, and you'd have to raise taxes for that.
Yeah. And the point I was making is they're saying, they want to know if they're getting anything out of this. Yeah, you're getting the fact, what you're getting is not, we're not going to move to go 14 mills or 19 mills in the property taxes, which is going to save the people money across the board. If you have a little increase six years from now in the water, it spreads it out over the whole community in a smaller amount than to have a larger, you know, property tax from the township. And I think it's the right way to go.
Well, for example, like this year, I think that we need to make a small .2, 3-mill adjustment in the fire fund to cover the workman's comp for firefighters. So, that's not the general fund, but it's a fire fund. We'll make a small adjustment. If we don't decide to move forward with either options, any of the options, and we go and raise those rates, what will probably happen is that in a year or two, another board will be having this discussion.
Yeah.
And then, we'll lose...
I think the benefit...
The assets will be sold, and we're paying higher rates.
I think the benefit outweigh the losses indirectly, in my opinion. But it's up to you guys. That's why we voted you in, to make that decision. What's best for the community.
Thank you, sir.
Okay? Thank you.
Ms. Hoover. Jack, I should call it on Judy. I apologize. I'll get you, sir. Don't worry. Good evening.
Hi. My name's Judy Hoover. I live in the Meadowwood section of Warminster Heights. I have some questions now that Pat came up and said something. You had, you talk about having a balanced budget, but you're talking about based on the expenses that we have now, right? You're not talking about having a balanced budget every year until 2025.
I apologize. I didn't mean to interrupt you. Did our calculations take in a certain amount of growth in the...
There was, it was a 2%?
Yeah. So, expenses were growing at 2%. Revenues at 1.75%. Expenses in the model were growing at 2% and revenues at 1.75%. And that's to be conservative, so that, you know, expenses typically grow faster than revenues in municipal government. So, that's what's in the model. So, there is growth in the expenses.
But just to be clear, that's growth for our existing operations. That's not contemplating a larger initiative being put forward.
Of anything, yeah. That's what I thought. And I was, I know that there were scenarios that were talked about in that big meeting we had in January 18th about, well, for one thing, you were all going to get together with the water authority. Did that ever happen? Did you guys all meet together and flush this out together, this whole scenario?
Be happy to talk with the authority. I did go to the authority board meeting on Monday.
So, the answer's no, right? We didn't have meetings together to flush out all the expenses.
So, I mean, what would you like to...
Well, I was just saying, because Dan, I think it was, and I think Mark, too, at that January 18th meeting said, "What we want to do is have a long-range, have a plan, sit down together with both the board and the authority, and work out all these issues together." And that's what you were proposing. So, I was wondering how many times you did that.
How many times you go over?
Never. Okay.
Actually, what the action that was taken in January was to engage PFM, to take a long-range look at our expenses, our debts, our pension, and come up with possible solutions for us. And that is precisely what they've done.
I understand. But we don't know what all the solutions and non-solutions are, so I'm curious as to why we don't have all the different scenarios, say, that were turned down, and why we had talked, and I think the Budget Committee talked last year, about possibly just selling the sewer system and selling the sewer system and seeing where that left us. Perhaps the sewer system would lead to another increase in the millage rate, but we want to see those, we want to see them, I guess we want to see the figures behind...
Yeah.
I don't like to make decisions based on a slide presentation, is my push.
I think Jason brought it up, and I'll reiterate it. I'd be happy to have public information sessions, because I think some of these questions are very detailed, and that's fine. You know, if people want to see the details and where we got the numbers, that's great. We can certainly set those up, maybe a couple of them at different times. So, we get one during the day, maybe one at evening, so people can come in and have that discussion, and look at the model that was created, and hear from everyone that put together these numbers.
Or possibly make it available on the Internet, so people can read it at their leisure, right? Are there any actuarial reports on some of the stuff, on the benefits, for example, for the pension?
Yes. Our actuarial reports are on our website. We are expecting a new valuation out, probably any day now. It's a two-year cycle. But, yeah, those are up on the website.
Okay. Now, my other concern is, I really have a concern. It raises the hackles on my neck just to think about privatizing the water system. I mean, if it's going to be sold, I don't think it should be to a private for-profit company. We won't have any control over the quality. We won't have any control over the rates. We won't have any control over the future. And it sounds good, three years of this and three years of that, still a raise because of the sewer system. But after that, it's all, anything goes. And I don't know, the water system is close to my heart. I don't want to see that sold, and that's my opinion. But I also have a problem with the idea of the employees. How are they going to be taken care of? How will the employees get taken care of? You say you can negotiate something, but that doesn't guarantee anything. And I know Warrington sold their water system, and the employees were supposed to be taken care of, but all they are doing is getting interviews. It doesn't mean they have a job.
Well, that's part of the negotiations. I mean, this board, I don't want to kill our leverage in public. This board, to a man and woman, has said, you know, "Part of what we want out of this is as much, as much as we can give the employees." I mean, there are no guarantees in life. I mean, a lot of us can be fired tomorrow if we want, but we don't want that for our employees. We want to negotiate that as much as possible. See, we can, if we go ahead and approve negotiations tonight, and then we come to a meeting later this year, or whenever it is, to vote on whether or not to sell, if the number isn't right, if the protections aren't right, they can be shot down. This doesn't commit to anything. I agree with you. It keeps me up at night, because I've been through it, too. I don't want, I don't want anybody thinking about, if I can give them protections in terms of, hey, your salary's comparable, your title's comparable, we can protect you for X amount of years. I don't, I'm not an expert in that category, so I don't want to start throwing things out there. But I think that's vitally important to everybody in this room and on this board. So, I agree with you.
I have a question about the fund for the pension and the benefits. Will that go into, how will that be, that will be a fund that's going to be handled by the supervisors, or is there going to be a trust?
I'm sorry, which fund are you referring to?
The pension fund or the benefits fund, either one, or it's going to be one fund?
So, no, would not be one fund. The pension fund already exists.
Yes.
So, the money would go into the existing pension fund.
So, there's an X amount that will just go into the pension fund, and that's done, right?
Yes.
So, we're not going to, how will we gain interest from that $45 million if it's going into the pension?
Not all of it's going in.
Right.
So, a large chunk...
So, what will we be getting interest on? How much will we be getting interest on?
So, a large chunk will go into the pension fund. We would get 6%, 7%, hopefully 8%, 9%, 10% a year, but our assumption that we're going to use is 6.75%. A chunk would be used to establish an OPEB fund, which is other post-employment benefits, post-retirement, healthcare. It's exactly like a pension fund. Again, we would estimate, or use assumed rate of return of 6.75%. The remaining would go in the last fund, which would, by state law, we are very limited on how we can invest that. So, that would earn, you know, 2%, 2.5% somewhere in that range, depending on where the market is.
That percentage is what's going into the general fund?
That is correct, yes.
Not anything else, right?
No. Once you put money into the pension fund or the OPEB trust, you can't take it out.
I know that. I know that, and I'd like to see those pensions protected, because I believe, unlike some people, that if you get a job and you're promised a certain pension, and you risk your life every day to take that smaller salary, you should get what you were told you were going to get when you retire.
You've got to keep the promises that have been made.
So, and the stormwater management, has anything been, has any thought been...
Not the same answer I gave to Mr. Hayes.
To sell, not to sell it or whatever? Because I know that in the stormwater issue is a big issue, because that's where most of our pollution comes from, is the runoff, according to the DEP.
Yeah. Stormwater is something that we're going to have to address either in-house or through an authority, yes.
I just think that, I think the people would be more prepared to vote on moving forward with this if they had more information and had the numbers behind what you're doing. I think, I imagine to a lot of people out here, it looks like a shell game, you know, and because they just don't know, you do this, that, that, and if we do this, and which hat has the interest under it? And what if there's a recession, is another thing. There's supposed to be a recession.
And... There's a recession. We'll be bankrupt quicker than we're already headed on a collision course with bankruptcy. It'll be here sooner.
So, I guess...
If we continue to do nothing.
I don't think we should do nothing, Mark. Believe me. But I just think...
Some people here think we should do nothing.
I don't know. But the whole, I know, I think we have to do something. I'm not sure that this is it. And I think we need to be shown why these other scenarios didn't work, like, for example, how come there's no, nothing up there that shows us how, what a bad mistake it would be for leaseback, for example, or what, you know, or if there's, if it's a bad mistake or if it's an error.
Want to touch on that?
We would like to see the different scenarios.
I know you only raised it over. Why don't you touch on that?
On the leaseback?
Yes, please.
Yeah. So, the leaseback was not recommended for two reasons. One was financial, that the estimate that we would need from the authority was approximately $7.2 million per year. Fluctuates year to year, but say, $7.2 million. If you did that, you wouldn't have any fund balance, and that would be a dramatic increase in rates. The equally troubling part with the leaseback is the very shaky legal grounds that it's been established on. There's very limited examples of this being done. There is a legal theory on how to get it done. It's never been tested in the courts. But when I look at what was done in 2012, where the legislature passed an act basically saying you can't funnel money from a municipal authority to a municipality, this is a naked and transparent circumvention of that legislative intent. It's creative and could, you know, there's lawyers that make arguments for it and some that make it against it. None of them wear the black robe that gets to decide. And until it's adjudicated, I'd have very strong concerns about pursuing leaseback, because the penalty for that is if you're found that it's improper, you have to give all the money back.
Oh, nice.
And if we went down that road, and I think we, some numbers were put in front of us in our presentation, you're looking at, I might be wrong, but at least a $500 a year increase in your water and sewer.
I don't, you don't have the number...
Make that $7 million per year, which wouldn't fix the problem. Make that $7 million per year, which wouldn't fix the problem, just keep our heads above water.
It looks to me like we're going to have that in 2025 anyway, by the time...
Just keep our heads above water.
About $560.
$560 year tax increase, because we'd be using the authority as a taxing vehicle.
Okay, well, I, I think that's all my questions for now.
Thank you, Ms. Hoover. Thank you. All right, sir. Yep. And if you're coming up for a second time, not to pick on you, because another gentleman's come up. If we can just keep him to a minimum.
One comment, I'm listening to this. It seems like we're getting off the selling of the water authority and what have you. It sounds more like an issue of what the township needs as far as income. Maybe you should have some sort of brainstorming session where I don't care if you sell bonds, if you want to put out a lottery, something has to be done, which is different than talking about selling the water authority. The, the budget and what you do is, has nothing to do with that, other than you're going to get money now, you're going to blow it, at the end, it's all gone, and you're still going to have nothing and no water and no control over that. So, I think you should have something set up where you could actually do a brainstorming session, what the township could do to raise money. That's the bottom line. You can't keep going in a hole. But then again, look what we have in the White House. So, I can't really complain about our township. We have a great township, but I think they need other ideas to get stuff done, so everybody will benefit.
Thank you, sir.
I can touch on that a little bit if you'd like. Before we go, that's a fair... So, just the, and I'm open to any ideas that, that people have. We have to make sure they're legal, though, in terms of raising revenue. We have very limited means on raising revenue in a township. We, of course, have property tax, we have the earned income tax, I know wages were, wage tax was mentioned. There already is a wage tax. It's at the maximum allowed by law right now. So, there are really no other avenues to increase revenue substantially other than a sale. We can look at increasing some of our fees. That will definitely not even, not even approach solving this problem. But again, we're, we're very limited to what's allowed by law and how to raise revenues. We can't do a lottery or any of these other ideas.
That'll be a sale. Okay. Ms. Crossen? Oh, sorry. All right. All right, Jack, this is your second by the apple. How are you, sir?
Just two quick comments.
Oh, sir.
The, what is the prospect, or have you ever all considered, if the rates have to go up, and one of your chart was, we're only $70 some dollars the first year, it goes down, and then it goes up 100 and something, 100 and something.
Right.
Would, would it not be a consideration to say, all right, double our water rates right now? Double our water rates, because it's going to happen. It's going to happen. So, the first two years, according to your chart, the rate goes down, but after that it goes up, and it only shows, what, three years? And every year after that, it'll probably be another $100. And there are people that pay far more than $1,000 for the water in Bucks County. You know that.
Right.
So, maybe we should hold, hold on to what we've got and use that as a possibility. And the other side of the coin that I was going to suggest, if, if we are having problems, Mr. Schuster questioned the, the amount of expected return. If we are not getting enough return to cover the pension's requirement as it is, filling the pot, selling the stuff, okay, getting a bundle of money, we sell it, okay, then the shortfall will still be falling short with our return, our investment return, because they're not getting that kind of money. Pensions used to be based on 4% return, and they were modest pensions, maybe 25% of what the original salary was, or something like that. So, if you're not, you're not, I don't think giving a proper picture, when you say it's, it's going to be clear sailing from there on out, because you're going to be deducting whatever, whatever revenue savings there are, that's going to be nicked away at.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Crossen?
Patty Crossen, 209 Ann Lane. So, I'm just trying to understand, the leaseback purchased, like, maybe we could sell the sewer part, and I said, you, you said that you're not sure, sure if it was legal or not to do the leaseback, but couldn't we find out that or see a, see a projection of it? I just think not seeing the whole picture of, of everything, the breakdown of the numbers, I, I think that it's throwing people off, that we know something has to be done. So, if you just sold the sewer and, and not the water, I mean, are these options, I don't see any of these options, like, why, why haven't we seen any of these?
Yeah, as, as I said, I'll go ahead and have a public session where we can go through all of those.
Did you, did you look at those, those things?
Sure, sure. We looked at those options, yes.
And they weren't feasible? They weren't, what, what, I'm not following.
So, they weren't, so financially, they didn't make sense. They, they didn't solve the, the problem. Can, PFM, do you want to jump in on the analysis?
Like, if you would have just sold the, if you just sold the sewer and then do a, a tax increase?
Yep, and we did look at that, and, and out of all the options, and at some point in the future, we should do this work session. I think the analysis would help you guys understand.
Because that shows nothing.
What we're looking at. Well, this is different. This is not, this isn't up there.
Oh, none of that, oh, oh.
Right, yes.
None of that shows any breakdown.
This is all the options we looked at, and there's about, I think, 11 or 12 options on here. One of them is what you're talking about, sell the sewer system and do the leaseback.
Yeah.
That was an option. The cost to the residents would actually be higher than under this scenario, under that option.
But we would still have an asset.
You would. You'd pay more.
Right, but you would still have something. After this is all said and done, what do we have? Nothing. We have nothing left.
$45 million in the bank.
Yeah, but that's, that's a blink of the eye in, in paying for things. I mean, literally, but if you do it that way, you still have an asset that you can use, and why...
Yeah, and that, and that is one of the options that the board has seen. So, I mean, I, again, I, I would encourage, let's do the work session so that we can...
And something to break down those numbers, because just putting those numbers there, they don't show the community anything.
It's hard to do a presentation with all the options. We would be...
Well, even a handout that broke it down would have been helpful.
So, typically, what we do in these, in these kind of processes, is every, all the numbers that we have right now are based on preliminary proposals. So, we have a lot more due diligence to do on the township side, on the bidder's side as well, over the next several months. So, again, in similar situations, when it comes time, the, the motion tonight or the vote tonight is just to proceed with negotiations, so we can fine tune the numbers. So, if and when the time comes to make a vote to actually sell, and that's not the vote tonight, the vote's not to sell, the vote's just to do more due diligence and enter into negotiations. So, when we get to the meetings later this year, when there are going to be considerations for a vote, that's where we typically have more of the presentation, more of the analyses, more of the other scenarios, because we have more definition around these options. Right now, these options, as Mr. Schuster said, they could change, you know, depending on the amount of employees being absorbed by the, the new company, based on the capital needs that are being assumed. Some of these numbers could change better, or they could go worse. So, we don't want to create any sort of false precision tonight just to give us the okay to continue negotiations. That comes a little, a little later down the road, when we have even more refined information to help everyone make a better, better decision. So, this is a multi-step process.
I am following you, but I just think when you come to the table, you should come with, these are the facts. These are the facts of all your options. Here you go, not just, here's, here's an option and good luck. I just think we should have had everything put on the table, so the community could say, oh, well, this one sounds a little bit better. Can we make this work? Not just hand that out and say, you know, this is what you're getting, because I, it just doesn't seem complete. And then we end up with nothing. We have, we have no assets left.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Darlene Baker, 1537 Mulberry Circle. I think we're between a rock and a hard place. I really do agree with that. I agree with Mr. Diamond that, I was glad that, I didn't realize that in 2013, we did away for new employees to, like, the 401K type things, like every other company has done.
Just non-uniform, not police.
I get that, because we can't do that, because the state controls that, so we talked to Governor, Governor Wolf about that?
Correct.
Okay, that's the next one, yeah. So, I do think we're between a rock and a hard place, and I'm one of the people that would read a 67-page Excel spreadsheet.
You're going to get the chance.
So, no, I, I would read that, and I would have questions, but I do think because of the defined pensions that we do have to fund, there's always going to be trade-offs, and if we have to sell something to make it work, I don't want my taxes raised 19 mils every year to figure this out. So, I'm going to have to trust that you guys are doing your due diligence, and I do think, you know, Mr. Schuster, if you will have working sessions, I think that would be really helpful for people to understand the options that we did go through, so we can ask questions. So, you know, I volunteer to be a part of that to make sure that I understand that, and I do understand that, you know, I think we all have to understand there's going to have to be trade-offs.
Guys, can you just keep it down a while? Thank you.
So...
Sorry, I didn't mean to gavel you. I just...
Yeah, no, but I, I do think we all have to understand there's always trade-offs on these type of things.
Thank you, darling. Yes, ma'am. I'm going to get everybody. I'll get you, Frank.
Lois Calla, 1195 Creekwood Drive.
Good evening.
I just have a question. If North Wales purchases the authority, what happens to the existing wells? Do they take over our water supply? And my understanding is that the federal government said some of our water is okay, meets their standard, so how would we know that North Wales wouldn't just say the water's good enough and funnels back our water to us after we've sold it?
So, that's something we would have clear and precise language in the agreement. You know, right now, we're getting clean water from North Wales. As for, just to clarify what you said, and I'm sure any of the professionals from the water companies that are here can correct me if I'm wrong, the federal government's position is actually that the water that's coming, or would come out of the Warmester wells, is safe to drink.
Right.
You know, so, there's a health advisory limit, but I still believe that they can put that, that water out there. We don't want that to happen, and that's why we're going to have to deal with, with North Wales.
Right, but I thought Warmester, because we control our own water, decided that the levels the federal government says are safe are not safe, and that's why we were using the North Wales.
The, the Warmester Authority made the decision that they want to get water, which is possible to non-detach levels, which is a, a great decision. It, it makes perfect sense, and that's why they did the deal with North Wales. So, the deal, and, and also, I don't think it would make financial sense for North Wales to switch on all these wells and start maintaining them and start pumping out this water. If you, if, if you'd like, Mr. Bender is here from North Wales, and maybe he can address that concern more directly.
Right, because as of right now, my understanding was that we're getting 95 pers... What's happening to the water in the township? Is it just dormant, sitting there?
Wells, yeah, I believe one of them, this is more a question for Mr. Haygate. I believe one of the, the wells is pumping to waste. I believe one of the wells is actually in production that has a filter on it, but Mr. Hay, you can give more detail.
Yeah, I just don't want you to sell the water authority, and then we get polluted water back.
As you saw in the presentation I gave, one of the criteria was clean water. If we can't get clean water out of this, it's a deal breaker.
Right, okay, thank you.
All right. Frank, and then I'll get you, sir. Sorry. I didn't see you there. It's a filter. I can't.
Good evening. Frank Feinberg, 525 Fisher Lane. I'll be really brief.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Schuster said it's about the numbers, and that's where my question is. In looking at the other charts, in order to cover the unfunded pension and benefits, and your unfunded liability, you're looking at about $27 million after your 2025. But if you sell the water and the sewer, you're looking at about, right now, $90 million, and you're saying you're going to put 45 in the bank. So, therefore, I'm assuming 45 is needed to pay everything down and, and get you going forward. So, my question is, you say the selling both the water and the sewer is the only way out. I think that's an option. I don't think it's the only way out, because if I'm looking, you're taking 45 million and putting it in the bank, you don't need that 45 million right now. The only thing that is doing for you is it's forestalling any possible tax increase in the general fund for the next X number of years. I, I really worry about the 45 million in the bank. And, and to me, to get that other 45 or 30 or whatever the heck it is, I don't think you do have to sell both pieces. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Feinberg.
Thank you.
Anthony Manoffo, 634 Ninth Avenue. Didn't we have this meeting a year and a half ago? So, why are we having it again? The township people said to you, we don't want you to negotiate this, and here you are trying to negotiate it again. I don't get it. If you sell all this stuff, you're not going to have anything to manage soon.
We don't manage the water authority now.
No, no, no. I'm talking to Mr. Schuster.
He doesn't manage the water authority.
Well, but if you sell it, you still don't have it. So, we're talking about selling $80 million or $90 million worth of assets to cover. I'm not even sure what the debt is. If it's 45 million, if it's 3 million you mentioned here on the board, plus 7 million for the pensions, the numbers really aren't clear. So, if you don't know what the debt is, you don't know what you're getting, or what you think you might get, you're saying, okay, this is all going to go, we want to negotiate. I don't know what you're negotiating. You're saying, okay, we're going to get X amount of dollars. I don't, and that's why when it said unfinished business here, and we're going to sell the water authority and the sewer authority, why wasn't and/or? I don't, I don't get the...
It can be and/or.
Well, why wasn't on here and/or?
Because I don't think they intended that to be a legal document.
It's a negotiate.
If it was to negotiate, I mean, I believe, what could come about? If, if we negotiate and we get to the next meeting, you could have, for example, with the water, you could sell it to North Wales, or you could not sell it. I mean, it, it's not, it's not binding us. They, I can see a scenario where one sells and one stays, but until we get the number, you know, go ahead. I don't want to, I don't want to take your time.
And again, and again, I agree with the gentleman who said, why not have a referendum? You already had that at tenant. People didn't want it. So, now you're trying to rail river through on a Thursday night in the summer, when there's an Eagles game on.
I think they are.
When people can't attend, the room holds 91 people.
Right.
You can't even get a representative number of people in here. So, later on, when the vote comes up, I'm sure you're going to vote to negotiate.
I intend to.
Right.
Yes. I intend to have as much information as possible. If I'm going to commit us to...
Okay, here's some information I like, then.
Go ahead, sir.
How much would raising the taxes to the max generate every year, and how much would it cost the taxpayer?
It would, I can let him answer that, but we'd still sell them here.
How much would it generate additional revenue?
We, we have...
Do we know that?
Yeah, the value of a collected mill is...
Micphone, please. So, so, one mil is 234, sorry, 300, 320, 326, thank you, 326.
The current rate is 11 mils about, right?
Yes, 11.07.
We go to 19, so 19 minus 11, that's eight, times 300.
2.4.
Yeah.
Right, 2.4 million.
That doesn't help us.
No.
Helps, but it doesn't fix the whole problem.
Doesn't solve the problem. We still go bankrupt. Just to, just to, I just want to be crystal clear about the situation we face right now. If we raise the mil rate up to 19, our absolute max.
Right.
We would probably limp through 2020, exhausting our operating reserve and exhausting our fund balance, and we would be bankrupt in 2021. All it does is delay the inevitable.
Okay, but does anybody think that, that by selling to Aqua, that that's not going to be another tax? Does anybody believe that up there?
No, I, I, it shows are pretty much there, that if the sewer...
Yeah, but that definitely shows it's six years.
No, it shows in the, the short term, though, too. The water rates, if we go to North Wales, the water goes down immediately, and it probably stays down for a long time. They have nothing approaching our, our current rate on water.
I understand that.
Sewer, whether it's Buffs County water and sewer, or if it's Aqua, there's going to be an increase in the rate. So, yes, we're not going to get out, out of this unscathed. There's going to be some, the difference is, under this particular plan, if this came to, we are talking $11 a month instead of 500 a year, 40, $50, and on top of that, having to pay an eight-mil tax increase, because I'll never take the taxes down. Once, once a tax increase is in place, I can't see a board repealing it. So, that's, that's how I'm viewing it. I...
All right, and about the employees, a lot of them are residents.
Yes, sir.
So, you're going to try and make sure that they have their jobs.
Of course.
Okay, so you're saying that it's going to record it somewhere.
I said it, I said it six months ago. I say it now.
Okay.
I, we're dead serious about that.
Because I'm one of the lucky 22 in this township. I have a grinder pump in my lawn, because I had sewage coming into my house. So, I don't know what any of these companies are going to do for me. This is the me part.
Right.
You know, I have an agreement with the, with the municipal authority. They come out twice a year. They service it. These guys are pleasant, and they are efficient, and they don't have any debt.
Right.
So, and I know that the current situation is not of all you're doing, but you haven't raised taxes. How long's this board been on now?
Years.
So, how come we haven't, we haven't raised taxes in eight years? I don't know how many times I've come up and said, if we raise them incrementally...
We're still here.
Yeah.
Well, up till, up till 2017, we had a very, very healthy fund balance, correct me if I'm wrong, and a balanced budget.
Right.
The last two years.
How do, how do I ask for a tax increase with a very healthy fund balance and a balanced budget?
You know what's coming in the future.
You would have been right at the podium, Tony, saying, why are you doing this to me?
No, I'm not, I'm not opposed to that at all. I haven't been for years.
With a very healthy fund balance and a balanced budget.
Well, I mean, if you're looking forward, you know that other things are going to come up.
Well, we started to see cracks in 2017, and we've been discussing this openly since, with proposed tax increases.
And it hasn't happened?
No.
Right. So, now here we're stuck, our backs are to the wall.
Absolutely.
And the only solution is sell, sell, sell. And I'm, I know what will happen for me. I'll be moving out of the township, because I know that when these guys get ahold of it, it's going to be another tax increase. I don't care what the chart says. At some point, when they own it, they can do what they want with it. They may say, okay, for X amount of years, here's what it's going to be. After that, it's, we're all fair game. And Aqua has a history in other townships like Hatborough, where the rates have doubled. So, that's what we can look forward to. That's a tax increase. So, no matter how you slice it. So, what are you going to do for me? You're going to negotiate me into your contract?
PFM, are you listening? Sure. That's part of the negotiation process. You talk over everything that goes on, and you deal with it.
I'm sure 22 people would have never came up.
Well, it has to.
Well, that's one of the reasons, I said this before, and I'll say it again, I would really prefer if the municipal authority would work with us on this. That's the only way to ensure all of these things, which we, we don't know about all these caveats. That's the only way to ensure we can take these into account, and most importantly, make sure that the employees are treated fairly and kept whole as much as possible with a different employer. I want to work with the authority if this goes, goes forward.
Okay. All right, well, let me see if there's anything else that I have here. So, I think most people covered it. I hope we have a referendum. I hope you get something out there that people can say, we want it or we don't want it, and you don't disregard them. But of course, that's already going to be a fait accompli after tonight.
Thank you for your opinion, sir. Appreciate it. I'm sorry. And then after, Mr. Hay, Betsy, you're absolutely next. I apologize.
Good evening. I'm Tim Hay. I'm the general manager. I'm Tim Hagie, I'm the general manager of the Warmminster Authority. I think the crowd would say, there's a lot of numbers, I think you agree, there's a lot of numbers. People have asked for slides, projections. PFM, your advisor here, has provided some. But sometimes when things get sticky, when things get confusing, you have to think about, let's go back to simple. And simple here is that the township government should fund township expenses with township revenue. That's really what it's about. PFM's here, Aqua's here, Bux County's here, North Wales is here, the municipal authority's here. We all know how to balance revenue against expenses. I've seen Aqua's bottom line, I've seen their financials. They know how to make money, and they know how to run a business. 2017, 2017, you said you had a healthy fund balance. So what, what we're saying now is that we have dire situation where we're going to go bankrupt from 2017 to 2019 or 2020. The selling authority is, is a short-term financial windfall for the township financed by authority customers. It's a one-time cash infusion that benefits the current administration. You want to improve on your past financial decisions, or do you want to double down on bad financial practices? 54 Bux County communities, and we're the only one that can't manage to have operating We've heard a lot about pensions. Pensions got us into this problem. We can't have pensions anymore. The last pension projection, there's a, by the state, the state does a municipal pension distress score, they do it every two years. The last one's a 2018 municipal pension distress scores, and that uses 2017 audited numbers. They have four categories. They have not distressed, they have minimally distressed, they have moderately distressed, and they have severely distressed. And it's an interesting, it's, it's an interesting statistics. What do you think the highest category is? The highest category, the highest number, there's 1,455 plans. Out of those 1,455, seven of them are severely distressed. Seven. That's a half a percent. Moderately distressed, there's 83 out of that 1,455, for 5.7%. Not distressed and minimally distressed make up the balance, 93.8%. So 93.8% of the pensions in Pennsylvania for municipal government can be funded properly. Of those nine, of that, that number, 526. 526 of 1,455 plans are actually overfunded. 2017 Warmminster Township was in the category of minimally distressed. The unfortunate part about pensions, and you heard some information from PFM and from Greg about smoothing, about not making the projected rate of return of 8%, that's a pretty high number. It significantly reduces the obligation for the municipality. I'll go back to simple. If you're going to sell the authority, and, and it's a, it's a slight pleasure to know that we're worth a lot of money. The Board of Supervisors needs to cover operating expenses with township expenses. So when you negotiate in the future for pensions and other municipal obligations, it's your money. You have township employees, public works employees, it's a hazardous job, one of the most hazardous in municipal government. You've got, you've got officers put on a tactical vest. You've made promises to them. You ought to pay it. You ought to pay those promises. Pensions are not something that can't be worked through, if you're diligent about it. Warmminster Township in 2007, what was the valuation in 2007 for the pension of the police? I think the police pension was about 123% funded. My, my, the employees of the authority were employed by the residents, and I certainly appreciate the support of the residents here. They do a good job every day. It's been very stressful for them to have to worry about whether they're going to be employed. They've done nothing wrong, they provide a great service to the community each and every day. We talked about them as, as an asset for a long, long time. They felt like a walking dollar bill. The Board of Supervisors has decided since 2011 not to raise taxes. Those tax increases would have gone a long way to making this township financially on a much more financial sound footing. President Kennedy years ago, and I'll paraphrase, wanted to send a man to the moon and return him. It was a great, great speech on goal-setting. And he said, "We did it, the country did it, not because it was easy, but because it was hard." Getting out of your financial mess by selling the water and sewer systems and taking the, the value of those systems is what, is what you're selling, is what, is why you can project some low numbers. That's the easy route. You've asked for cooperation, Greg's mentioned it a number of times this evening. Aqua got invited here tonight. North Wales got invited here tonight. PFM's here tonight because they're your financial advisor and you're paying them. Bux County got invited tonight. Now invite for us.
Tim, you sat in my office. I told you about the meeting. I went to your board, I told you about the meeting.
You didn't tell me about the meeting, you tell me you were going to, you, the board was intending to sell. So...
I disagree with that vehemently.
Well...
You think this meeting was a secret?
Everybody here got invited to make a present, here to answer questions, it would have gone a long way.
Tim, one, it was on your website that there was a meeting, a website that you manage.
I get it.
Second point is, did you not inform the township that your board on July 15th took a vote to recommend that the township sell the water to North Wales? You have a board member, George Lewis, here, who you said I had a conversation with, which I did, with your board member, George Lewis, said yes. On July 15th, your board took a vote to recommend to sell the water to North Wales. Who's being deceitful to the residents now, Tim?
We're not being deceitful. What my board has said...
Tim, Tim, tell the people, tell the people...
What my board has said...
Excuse me, you spoke, now I'm going to speak.
Sure.
Tell the people that your board, you told me, you told this township, that your board took action to make the recommendation to sell the water to North Wales. Did that conversation not take place? Yes or no?
So the conversation did take place.
Tim, it did. So, so you did recommend, you did recommend that we sell to North Wales. You did. Frank, I'll give you one second, Frank. An executive session.
That's your Frank.
Yeah.
Please, let Tim answer, and then if Frank wants to join, Tim, that's fine, please.
So the board had discussed what was best for the community, and at the time, we thought it was best that we lock in our water supply with North Wales. We get a lower rate, and it, and they would protect our employees. So the, that came about, as you said, there's no doubt about that.
You did say that.
And then what happened was, Mr. Schuster said that the board had decided that they were going to pursue a sale of both the water and sewer system, and our board met after that. And they decided that, that I was not to pursue that with, with you anymore. So that's what happened.
Okay. Tim, being an elected official, which you once were, there's nothing more important than trust and honesty with people. There's been nothing but trust and honesty, Tim.
Are you accusing me of being dishonest?
One conversation, one conversation with me, then act like the conversation never happened.
I just told you exactly what happened. If you don't want to hear it, that's something...
Everyone in this room, know that that conversation happened?
Please.
That's exactly what happened.
All right, so we got it cleared up now, that's, thank you. All right. Everybody to their corners. Sorry, please, did you have any more, Mr. Hagie?
No, I've said too much.
All right, thank you, Mr. Hagie. Okay, Mr. Row. George, I'll get you in a second. You're up. Yeah, don't worry. If, Betsy, can, can Frank have the, for one moment? Come on.
She's been waiting forever.
Betsy, you're a saint, I appreciate your patience, I apologize. Mr. Feinberg, please go ahead.
We will have it in the minutes. The board did not vote to sell the water authority. We took a consensus of the board to do an exploratory discussion with the board about the possibility of considering selling the water authority. And Tim, being a good civil servant, projected that because of, he thought it would be the easiest, and we're getting our water authority, and less, and we're getting our water from North Wales, and that might be the easiest way to solve the problem of the township.
All right. Okay.
And on a personal note, seriously, Dan, I don't see how you could say that to someone that they're being dishonest. I, I take offense.
Who in the room knew that was happening?
Sorry, Betsy, we got to go.
Before anybody talks, go.
Betsy Rowe, 32 Jamison Street. And I wasn't going to talk about this, but...
Betsy, can you go near the mic a little more?
Oh, I'm sorry. Betsy Rowe, 32 Jamison. Last year, at the meeting, everyone on the board made a public announcement that they weren't going to sell the water. Absolutely not. So things change, and with more information, maybe some of our minds may change also, but hopefully, we'll have that information before you take a vote to proceed. So also, back in last March, Greg, you had this great idea, and it was...
Oh, please, what is it?
It was, it was to do the application to the DCED, the Early Intervention Program, and they had a grant that was available, so that they would match whatever we were paying to have all these valuations done and all. I was wondering how that was going. Are we, did we get the grant?
The board didn't authorize moving forward with that.
We can get three votes.
Well, are we allowed to do that retroactively? Because this is getting kind of expensive.
So that grant opens up again next year, but in the absence of any action, will most likely be in Act 47. So those services would be provided by a state-appointed coordinator.
You can't just kind of kick that back until January and apply for that, and take that time to educate our residents, so that we know what maybe Plan B would have been that wasn't possibly the best plan. But you, I think you would have a lot more support if we had a better understanding and more access to the information. So if you could put that big report on the internet, and then set up your, a couple...
Just the, the presenting, every, part of the public information session, where you present all, present all the data so that they, they can understand.
Oh, yes, yes, yes.
Yeah, so if you can do that, and then maybe if you could just postpone going forward with negotiations, then we won't have the problem that happened, and I hate to date myself, but back in the 70s, when the Nishamity Water Resources Authority decided they were going to have this joint thing with Bux County and Montgomery County, and it was a pipeline coming from Point Pleasant all the way across, so that all of Bux and Montgomery County would have water. The public went berserk, and the county lost a very lot of money, because they thought everybody knew this was a great idea. But what happened was, it went to referendum, and they had to pull out. There was a huge lawsuit, and it cost us a very lot. So the water that we're now buying from North Wales comes from all the way up in Point Pleasant, cuts across all the way Bux County, and then they're selling it back to us. And I think that there's a possibility that if we don't get that taken care of with our wells, that that could happen again, and we could end up owing a lot of money if the public gets outraged and decides to halt you and all that. So if you could take your time, just a little bit, a little bit, would it be safe to do that and have that information out there, so that we don't have a lot of angry residents?
Well, we're, you know, through this process, we're going to put out all the information we possibly can. We would have those meetings that I spoke about, where residents come, come in, look at all the, the data. The only thing that I, I can't recommend, and that is slowing down. Again, I have to make it crystal clear, in 2020, we are bankrupt.
Well, there's no Plan B out of all of that? We didn't see any Plan B that can limp you along for another year, you said, until...
So, so there...
So then we could sell it after another year, maybe?
So Plan, Plan B would be increasing taxes up to the 19-mill limit, which would probably get us through 2020, but go bankrupt in 2021. The more applicable plan, Plan C, or whatever you want to call it, would be Act 47.
Okay, so we're not just looking into this, you would have to sell by 2020 in order to not go bankrupt?
Correct. There would have to be a large infusion of cash, as we've talked about in the near term, to go ahead and address our financial issues, yes.
Okay, so when you're making this determination tonight, you're basically making a determination to sell.
No, we're not. Because we can go ahead, we could say negotiate, we get to it, and we say, "The sewer doesn't work, people are against it, we don't vote for the sewer, we vote for the water," or vice versa.
All right, so we'll see all the options.
All those things, or nothing, and then we raise the mills, raise it eight mills. There's, there's various different scenarios that can happen, but if we don't, if you don't negotiate, nothing can happen. It's just eight mills, and that's it.
Okay.
That's how...
So we're going to have other meetings, and you're going to say how this is going, and we're going to know.
Yeah, I've already committed, that'll be happy to have the public sessions, and my guess is that there'll be other public comment at future meetings as well.
Sure. Okay. And you're going to get us that grant money, right?
I'll work on it.
I, if the board wishes to pursue that next year, depending on our financial situation, we could absolutely look into that, yeah.
Okay. That would be great. And there is some legislation right now at the state level, and they're talking about changing the water standard and making it a little bit stricter. So possibly, if the timing of that could play out, then maybe we would be able to approach the federal government one more time. Now, we did take action as a board, correct, and, and approached the federal government for reimbursement?
Oh, we have. Oh, yeah.
Yeah, the board has passed a resolution, and we hold the Navy responsible for the damage that's been done, and...
Our congressmen have worked on us, our senators, Casey and Toomey.
And Megan just got...
And Megan's fully aware of it, too.
Right, I thought she just got $6 million for us. Did that get turned in?
Six million dollars to us?
Six million dollars, well, no, for the water.
But you'd have to talk to them.
Okay. All right. All right, well, even that's still on my list, thanks.
Thank you. Dr. Bailey? I'll get you in a moment, sir. Dr. Bailey.
Thank you. I'm on the water authority for a number of years, and we made a recommendation, well, we've been trying to cooperate with the board, come up with a solution, what is the township's problem. As Tim said, it's because we haven't raised taxes in all these years, is the major problem, and that's on you guys, not on us. But how about 30 million? You mean you can't get by with 30 million? Suppose you just sold the water authority. What do the numbers look like down the road?
Right.
And does it look like the township is still going to go broke in 10 years?
Well, that's one of the options that's on the table.
Well, you better take a real good look at that, and it also gives you a couple more years to work on this, instead of having to do it right away.
Right, I mean, I agree with you, Dr. Bailey. I mean, if you, in terms of, we look at all the options, we're not like it's married together, it has to be everything all at once, same time.
I mean, the 30 million obviously takes care of your debt in terms of the pensions. Now, you're going to have to think about raising the mileage, and as Tim said, you've got to live within your budget, and you can't be spending money increasing your budget, and then saying, "Well, we'll just sell something else."
I hear you.
All right.
Thank you, Dr. Bailey. Sir, you have your hand up. Can you come up? Can you come up? The people at home can't hear you. You've got to be on TV.
I believe it.
I believe it.
Yep. Joe Amato, 723 Parmentier Road.
Yes, sir.
And I think one thing that would help greatly, if you amended this presentation, to just like he said, do the thing about, what if you just sold one piece or the other piece? Because right now, when you're doing it, inaction has brought us to the point where you're at the edge of the cliff. And someone's saying, "Well, do you want us to save you, or do you want us to let you drop?"
Right.
And it's not really that simple. So, give the two presentations, and give it a chance.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Amato.
Thank you.
Scanning the room, scanning the room. Yes, sir.
How you doing? Bill Pilo, 244 Lough Lane.
Good evening.
So, after the presentation, my mind just went all over the place, I actually had things prepared, but a couple of things that actually are correct with the slide, your water bill will go up approximately $146. They will promise you first three years fixed rate, three to five, or three to six increase rate after that. Sorry, nervous, I don't know why.
It's okay, take your time.
More anxiety, actually. I find it very upsetting. After that, pretty much, they can do whatever they want. There's actually legislation written, and I don't know if this was covered. So, the regulatory agencies are actually from the state, are allowed to collect a 6.6% for every loan that they get. So, they buy us, they say maybe $10 million in improvements to the infrastructure, they're not allowed, they're also not, not only allowed to collect the $10 million back from us in billing, but they're also allowed to make 6.6% up to on top of that as profit.
It's a PSC process, which can be made, too.
Okay, so, realistically, let's face it, they're a for-profit industry. You don't see private companies going out buying firehouses, you don't see them go out and buy police stations, because there's no money, right? So, another example that I like to use, which I think is actually close to home, I actually have about six or seven, but I'm just going to do this one. I don't know if I can breathe long enough. Allentown, and I won't give names or anything, because I think it's irrelevant, sold their water department for $220 million, $220 million in 2013. This article that I actually pulled from the internet was written in May of 2018. So, at this point, we're five years in the future, the three-year guarantee, the two-year guarantee, or three-year guarantee after that, which basically is around the five-year point, when their obligations, as far as rate increases, ends. So, this is falls right in there, because this is 2018, they sold it in 2013, so that's five years. And their bills went from quarterly to monthly, they went up 27% or something, but one of the unique things was that they tacked on a $13 a month bill to their monthly bill as an administrative fee. It had nothing to do with their water bill, so regardless of how much water they actually consumed, even if it was zero, they would still get a monthly bill of $13. Another thing that Pennsylvania enacted by law is that the private company, as you know, they're starting to gobble up a lot of the municipalities throughout Pennsylvania. Well, they passed a law that actually allows them to distribute their expenses across their entire base. So, my thing would be, Warrington just got bought, okay? So, let's say the company, whatever that be, Warrington bought, and then they buy Warminster, so, we have 30,000 users, I don't know what Warrington is, 10, 15,000, right? So, it's 45,000. And let's say we needed $10 million in infrastructure work here, they would actually be able to spread that through all 45,000. So, Warrington's rate could technically go up, even though they didn't get any infrastructure improvement. Okay? If I'm wrong, just correct me. The internet's a little hard to research, I've been working on this for weeks. So, back to Allentown. So, they made $220 million in 2013, and in 2013, they transferred $150 million to previous liabilities, we'll call it, okay? And now, come 2019, the mayor's passing the largest property tax increase allowed by law, because they're broke again. So, from 150, which from 220 is $70 million, in six years, they're broke. They're right back where they started, they have no water department, their rates have tripled, and now they're raising their taxes to the maximum level, because they can't pay their bills again. So, I think this is just another kick the can down the road. My personal opinion. Do I have any more time, officer?
It's, yeah, you...
Well, I thought you were keeping track.
No, 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 no. You've prepared this, I'm not going to cut you off, please finish, yeah, I'm not going to...
Well, I saw him keeping track earlier.
Oh.
I didn't have time to practice or shave, I apologize.
It's all right, don't worry about it, please, please finish your thoughts.
Take a deep breath.
Yeah, it's okay.
I actually do this quite often, as far as trainings purposes, but not in a group for this kind of stuff.
Okay.
Actually, I kind of summarized all the important things I think I wanted to get But I think that pretty much covers it. I, you know, human beings need two things, they need air, and they need water to survive. If you give up control of those, we pretty much die. One gentleman had said, and I thought I had done some decent research, but apparently not did enough, "If our budget was on target all the way up to 2017, how did we get into such a mess in a two-year period?" So, either... And I looked at the audits all the way back from, to 2013, and like the PM, I'm sorry, I don't know your...
PFM.
PFM had stated that the board projected 8% from 2013 all the way through 2018, even though each subsequent, each consecutive year, we never even came close to the 8%. So, we were digging ourselves a hole since 2013. So, for example, like 2013, they projected 8%, the return was 3, so we're minus 5. 2014, they projected 8, made maybe 3.5, we're 2.5 more in the hole, on top of the other five from the previous year. And it just went on. They had one good year, it was 2017, I think they had a 17% return, but by the time you figure out the negative, or the cumulative positive of five years times 8 is 40, you were not even close to 40. You don't, never play catch-up. Plus, you have, I assume, interest overdue on what you didn't pay for the previous year, on top of the shortings. I just, unlike the manager of the water authorities says, it's like, if all these other townships can manage to balance their budgets, what's wrong with us? So, are we not projecting out far enough into the future to plan? I mean, it sounds like more of a reactive thing, you know, "Oh, we have a crisis, let's react." What's the first thing to do? Well, let's sell the water department. Oh, it's crisis management, that's right. So, that's not management, so what we really need is some leadership. Right? You can't be planning one year, two years, five years out the road. In one of the audits that I read, actually, Mr. McKee, is that correct?
Right.
Okay, I don't know any of you personally, so forgive me if I don't recognize you by face. In the audit report, which I guess is done by an outside agency...
Yes, that's required by law.
Right, okay. That was the one I was reading for the 17 or 18 year, I can't remember, there was a lot of info. And your name actually came in, into the report, and you're the only one that cited that, "We are going into a financial crisis if we do not raise taxes," and, "To an impending doom of some sort," kind of thing, like this scenario we're in now. You're the only one that pointed it out, when the rest of the boards, like, "No taxes."
That's leadership, my friend.
So, I'm like, I like this guy, I says...
Thank you.
He's calling it like it is. Earlier this afternoon, I was kind of getting pissed at you, but I let that go.
Oh, all right.
Anyway...
Man, you're on a roll, don't stop, you're on a roll.
So, I mean, there's a lot of stuff going on here, and I'm having a hard time wrapping my head around, like, unless you disagree with the facts, that in 2017, we're pretty much solvent, and now in 2019, rolling into 2020, we're filing for bankruptcy. So, now it brings me, and I hate to say this, it's like, if you can't manage us for a two-year period, why would we allow you to even make a decision for 21, 20 and 21 in the first place? We really should wait for the next board to come in. And I really feel for the water department, I work with these guys occasionally, because the work I do, we do some things over there, but that's another story. But one last thing, and I really don't want to make this point, so, to give you my background, I've done 20 years in the service, and I don't need to thank you, I did three years of police, worked also while I was there. I really have an appreciation for the police department, you know, when I see bad things on the, on TV, you know, they did this, they did that, it's not as easy as it looks, carrying a gun around all day long, you know, basically holding a life in your hand, and it's a very stressful situation, so my hat off to you, sir. But... And I really don't want to, but, so, everybody always picks on the weakest part of the department in the township, the part that people will have the less fuss of, like, the water department. Like, well, nobody sees the water department, we pull, we open up our tap, the water comes on, we use our, you know, bathrooms, and everything goes away, and everybody's happy. And then, so, I did some more research, and obviously, there's more townships that seem to run into this problem, obviously, Allentown, East Strousburg, that was one of my other ones I was going to use, the Poconos of Bushkills, they've all sold their water departments, Lake Station in Indiana, Vassula, Montana, Fort Wayne, Indiana, these are a limerick. By the way, these were supposed to be my ugly stories, but I don't think I have that much time on the losses that they're involved in, for various reasons. But, so, I started researching other things into, you know, police departments, allocations, things of that nature, and I came across this unusual piece that was written, and did you know there's 1,300 municipalities in Pennsylvania that do not have a police department?
Yeah.
1,300 do not have a police department whatsoever. And there's this town in York County, which I believe is out near Pittsburgh, called Hempfield?
Harrisburg.
Hempfield?
Harrisburg.
No, it's not Harrisburg, it's AP, it's a K or an H, E M P, whatever. Anyways, they have a population of 40,000 people, and they don't have a police department. That's, I can't imagine that. But I think police is an excellent thing to have, it's great security, we have that other officer honored this morning, saved a life, probably multiples, from not allowing that vehicle to continue out of control. But I think you're disproportionately, you know, laying the finger on the water department here as a scapegoat for a lack of leadership over the last few years, that has put us into a predicament in two years. And with that, I close, and thank you.
Thank you. Last call, but, ma'am, come on up.
I just have two, maybe three questions.
Sure.
I just don't know, where can you cut corners? I'd ask for that. Why are you spending a million dollars to fix the golf course if we're already bankrupt? I don't understand that. And other people covered everything I said, but I'd be happy to pay more taxes.
Can you address...
And I don't want to see people lose their jobs, and how many, times and times again, when a company is taken over by someone else, they run it into the ground, and all the promises they make, that they're going to treat the employees well, they don't.
In terms of cutting corners, just to let everyone know what's been going on for the last, you know, five, 10 years, we've decreased number of employees in administration and public works, we have outsourced the Allen I Division. Police at one point was a high of 54.
Four.
54 officers, now down at 44 officers. The township has seen a tremendous decrease in the level of service and level of employees over the last number of years. The question about the golf course, understand completely, the golf course is a separate fund, zero tax dollars flow into that fund, it's all supported by people who are paying to go golfing there, or their events, or food and beverage. So, that's what's funding that, it's a separate business fund, it has, it's not co-mingled with the township's finances.
Ms. Rowe?
Hi, Pat Boyle again. If the Navy reaches a settlement on the water and the damage that was done, would that money come to the township, or would that go to whoever then owns the water in this sewer?
Excellent question, I don't know the answer, we'd have to look at that legally.
Okay, I have two quick comments. One is that the defined benefit pension is set by the state legislature, it is their pension, too, so you're never going to see that change. And the other one was, the reason the budget was balanced all those years was because of the smoothing plan on the pension, and that was a way the state allowed townships to balance their budgets, when in fact, they really worked.
Pension took a tremendous hit in 2009.
Yes.
Tremendous.
Yes. Market crashed in the end of eight.
Right, and then pension administrators were changed here, and there's a report somewhere to Mr. Schuster that we had done.
But with the smoothing, it made it seem like we were balancing the budget, but we really were not.
We were in the midst of a great recession.
Yes.
So, what smoothing does is it decreases the rate of the increase of expenditure, so...
Right.
It pushes it out to the out year, so that was one methodology used to push off those liabilities. There's another big fact that's happened over the last few years, we've had a structural deficit in the budget for a number of years. If you look back, I don't know how many years, you'll actually see budgets that are continually adopted, that actually do not balance, where the expenditures are greater than the revenues. The reason why those deficits haven't come to fruition is because there was a boom in Warminster, and we were receiving a lot of one-time revenue from building permit fees, all the things that come in with that kind of development. And what was stated in 2017 is that, you know, we have this structural deficit, we can go back and see that, we did talk about it, but that's the reason why, you know, things have...
But that's the reason why, you know, things have progressed so quickly.
But we haven't paid the full pension money for years.
Of course. No, 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 no.
So, all those years where we said we had balanced budgets, we really didn't.
So, one time in 2017, so that was the first budget I created, and I was able to do that with the funds we had to pay the market value on a police pension, albeit it was still within eight percent assumed rate of return, which is too high. But at least it was big.
Which has been the standard forever, since like the eighties.
For here, yes.
Yes, for most of it.
Well, I would say you're seeing a big change, where eight percent is not.
But before it was.
Oh, yes. Go back ten, fifteen years, they were all at eight percent. Yes.
Any other public comments before we move on to the motions? I'm not seeing any more. Sir, come on.
Frank Albert, Seventeen Walk Street. Just wanted to make an observation, or a point that for generations, people have been paying a rate for water and sewer services. And they've understood that that's paying for the water, but it's also paying for the properties that you needed to buy to run everything. So, now, if, and it's understood that they basically own a piece of the municipal authority. Everybody in the township that has a house and is paid towards the municipal bill, they own a part of it. Like, ten thousand units, it's divided in by ten or whatever, ten thousand people, they own a percentage of that forty-five million that you could sell it for. So, when you do sell this, and it all goes into the payoff, the pension, and goes into the general fund, and the fund interest is going to use for something. But, it's in no way going to their utilities. That money was, like, they thought they were spending the money to cover their utilities. They are, at the same time, they were paying taxes to cover their, all their other bills, like, the police, the streets, whatever else. But, that was what they agreed to pay towards utilities, water and sewer. Now, all that money is basically, or all the piece of the, the piece of the authority that they had in their pocket is basically being taken out of their pocket and being put in somebody else's bank. I mean, it's still their bank because they're still Warmminster resident. But, I don't think they're being asked enough about if that's really what they want their money to go towards. So, that's, I don't think we should move forward, as you're saying. We need, you're saying we need to keep the momentum to get to, if, even if we're not going to sell the Water Sewer Authority, we need to get closer to knowing exactly what it's worth, and who's going to buy it, and who would buy it for what. But, I really don't think it should be an option. And also, I did want to make the point that it seems like you guys have gone through a lot of different options. Like you were saying, you've tried to explore options on things that would have solved our problem sooner, or things that would solve our problem. I think it would, it'd be really nice to know, like you're saying in the information session, but it would have been nice to know before getting to this point. But, I guess it's hindsight for now. But, I just don't think that we should move forward with any more voting on something I don't think is an option. And the problem that we have with the taxes, or the problem we have with the deficit, wasn't really created overnight, although it was two years, you know, 2017. But, I don't think, I don't think we need to look for one thing to get us out, completely out of it. I don't, I don't see why there can't be something that will get us partially out of it, or ten years down the road, to where, you know, we're keeping our head above water, and we're still solvent, we're not in debt. Why do we have to completely, like, like you said, we're going to explore if we need someone, the other, or neither, or both. But I don't, I don't see why such a drastic measure is needed, when a smaller thing can be done to just get us out and above water, keep our head above water. I don't, I don't think there's any need to be forty-five million dollars in the bank. All right. That was just my point.
Good evening. Chris Burdink, 675 East Street Road. Our friends from Public Financial Management made me remember this cautionary tale. In 1995, the city of Pittsburgh had its Water and Sewer Authority issue bonds to monetize some of the assets of the Water and Sewer Authority that provided a cash infusion to the city of Pittsburgh. And it worked for about three years. But there wasn't sufficient long-term planning done to coincide with the transaction. And PFM ironically would become agents of the state when the city of Pittsburgh, which I think is the largest municipality ever, entered Act 47, would enter it in 2004. So, some of the questions I would have, it would be nice, as we're considering these decisions, to see the long-term capital plan for the township. I noticed in reading the financial statements that the debt seems like it is all in the form of notes that rolls off in about five years.
Twenty twenty-three, yes.
Yeah. But, but what I really couldn't tell was what, what infrastructure needs we have, and what the, what the plan is, or how this transaction would help to fund those needs. So, a little bit of information on that. You power quickly, you can provide.
We do have a capital improvement plan that we updated.
Yeah, we have a capital improvement plan, and as part of the information session we talked about, I can certainly have that available.
Yeah, it's, we had that updated a year or so ago, and had a huge public meeting about it.
How many years out does it go?
I believe it goes five years out.
So, what is the assumption around, because that's when the debt ends. What's the assumption around after those five years?
I don't have it in front of me. I don't know.
Yeah. So, I hear you on the five, but, because that's a six hundred, that's six hundred thousand dollars of the general fund budget that will roll off in five years. So, is this, with the capital plan only going five years, I can't tell?
Well, there's assumption in there built in that capital funding will continue.
The next question I would have, and I know there's a long-term, essentially, inter-fund loan with a golf course.
Yes.
Is there any opportunity to monetize that long-term loan without selling the golf course?
Well, we hope that it will be paid off over time. So, as the golf course continues to be successful, last year was not the best year because of the excessive rain we had. But in the year prior, and then this year's looking good, we're receiving good cash flow from there. So, over time, yes, we do want the golf fund to pay back that inter-fund loan.
Are there, in terms of the banking arrangements that the township has, what's the average cash balance in the general fund?
Depends on the time of year.
Yeah. What, what does the cash flow look like over time? I'm just curious, because the interest earnings in the general fund were eight thousand, about eighty-two hundred dollars last year.
Yeah.
And the footnote on, on investment suggests that most of it's held in a bank account, but we can't.
Yeah, we've changed that. So, now that, when the real estate taxes come in, we get the bulk of our money, that's transferred over to a pligot account. And we feel that's the best, best rate we can get right now.
So, when did that change occur?
This year.
Very good. Okay. Well, thank you, and look forward to whatever information you can share with the public.
Thank you, Mr. Burdink. Mr. Bender? Come on down. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Bob Bender, I'm the Executive Director of North Wales Water Authority. I just want to make a few corrections I think are important. There are a couple misstatements here tonight. People talked about us perhaps being a for-profit company. We are not. We are a Pennsylvania municipal authority, just like your authority. We must operate as a non-for-profit basis. We don't have paid directors. We don't pay dividends. We don't answer to Wall Street. Any monies left over at the end of the year go into next year and go into our capital budget. So, we are clearly not for profit. Someone else suggested that perhaps this was a done deal. And I can assure you all, from my side of the table, it is not. We haven't agreed to anything yet. We've agreed to sit down and talk, if you want to do that. And of course, the catch-22 is, unless we have those discussions, I don't know how I can answer questions about the numbers, nor how can you answer questions, until we have numbers. So, the purpose of that, I think, is that we can put something on the table. Someone suggested that the employees were not taken care of in Warrington, and all they got was interview. That is blatantly false. We have hired every employee. They have signed employment agreements. They have salaries equal to or better than. Several of them got raises. Their pension, their pensions are comparable, or if not better. And we've given every one of them credit for their years of experience with the township. So, if they've been there fifteen years, they start with us at fifteen years seniority. So, as to rate structures, we have not raised our rates in twenty-four years because of good management, because of slow and steady and well-fought-out growth. It's mostly an economy of scale. There's no guarantee that we're going to raise them even after the three years. I put that in there because I would be foolish to say we're never going to have a rate increase. But even if we did, in six years, you'd be at three ninety-six, well below where you are today. So, further, we're willing to put in an agreement, if you choose to do business with us, that forever, you would have the same rate we charge everywhere else in our system. We go all the way to the, you know where we are. We're down in Whittpain Township in the Oak Park windows. We've been in business seventy years. We have never had anything but a constant rate for our entire system. And that's our policy. We operate our municipal authorities act. So, we don't get to do the six percent profit. We don't get to do those things. We're a nonprofit municipal authority. We have a great relationship with Warmminster Township. We have for years. You buy your water from us now. And as your manager pointed out, if you choose to do business with us permanently, you will have a permanent supply of water from our Forest Park plant, not something that's going to expire in a few years. Somebody asked about the wells, that's my last comment. We would have no intention to put those wells back online. What we're doing in Warrington Township is we're putting perhaps two of them, maybe three of them, we haven't even decided yet, to put the filters on them, bring the water down to the lowest possible level, and hold them in case of a major fire, or a water main break, or some emergency in the community. We have plenty of water at Forest Park. It's coming this way now, and that's what we'll continue. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bender.
One second, Mr.?
Mr. Bender?
Yeah, one, one second, one question.
Yes, sure.
So, the employee, the existing Water Authority employees have jobs. Would they stay in Warmminster? Would they stay where they're at?
Well, first off, I'm not going to guarantee you all the job. What I will guarantee is that we will interview every single one.
Yes.
We have a criminal background investigation. We have urine tests. We have drug testing. We have all those things. If they qualify for us, we would certainly consider them. All the Warrington people are going to stay in Warrington, at least for the time being. Some have expressed interest in growing their career. We, you want to be one of five or one of fifty-five. So, some of them will go there. We've been doing this a long time. I've been doing this since nineteen seventy-one. I am not foolish enough to say, give me your keys, and we'll run your water system. We need those people. If we take the system on, not only do we want them, we need them. They know how to run the system. They've been doing it for years. They know your customers. They know where the valves are. So, we're not foolish enough to say, toss me the keys, we're going to run your water system. Your people will be taken care of.
Thank you.
May I ask you a question?
Yes, ma'am.
Would you grandfather our employees in that you hire, like you did with the ones in Warrington?
Absolutely. And the other thing, somebody mentioned loss of control, last thing. One of the provisions in the Warrington agreement that I would certainly consider is, first off, we can't be sold like a for-profit. Where our charter would have to change. I mean, you know, back seventy years, we have to change our charter. But in the unlikely event, someone could figure out how to do that. Warrington has a right of first refusal to take the system back at the price they paid for, less depreciation. So, it's not that they'd even have to compete against somebody else. They'd have a right to get their money back and take their system. So, they maintain that control. And control is really DEP anyhow. So, but yes, we would, we would grandfather the people in, and we give them seniority, just like they had. It would be really unfair for your people to have worked here for ten or fifteen years or so, and then say, let's start over with one week's vacation again. We wouldn't do that. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for having us here today. My name is Mark Luca. I'm the President of Aqua, Pennsylvania. And we are very pleased to have the opportunity to negotiate a transaction with you, not only for the wastewater system, but if you choose for the water system as well. There were several comments here tonight echoing the employees of the authority. And in every case, we treat the employees exactly as was just discussed. They would all be offered opportunities to come to work for Aqua, and they would be given opportunities to work in this area. If they chose to work somewhere else within the Aqua footprint, or sought to advance, they would certainly have opportunities to do that as well. In addition, when we purchase a system, we do not look to sell that system. That was a comment that was made, or a question that was made earlier. We would keep the systems as we always do, and we would continue to run them as we run our systems today. So, I'm available if there's any questions. But I did want to put that out there because there were a couple of questions, certainly along the employees tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. All right. Am I missing anybody? All right. So, I'm going to close public comment now. And we're going to move into the motion part of this. All right. So, there's, the first motion would be authorization, authorization to proceed with negotiations. Is that correct?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. If I could read the full motion as laid out in the memo to you. The requested motion is as follows. Motion to authorize and direct township staff and professionals to take all necessary actions to negotiate with North Wales Water Authority to sell the township's water assets, and Bucks County Water and Sewer Authority and Aqua America to sell the township's sewer assets, with final agreements to be brought to a future meeting for board ratification.
Okay. Thank you. Before I make that motion, any questions or comment from the board?
Yeah, these, these work sessions, how many we're going to have, when would they start?
Yeah, I prefer to start them as soon as possible. I would, I'd say, let's start with two. Probably have one during the day and one in the evening timeframe to hit both, both timeframes. If they're extremely well-attended, and we feel there's a need for more, we can certainly add after that.
Okay. And how will we get the word out?
We, we put out press releases, put things out on social media, on our website. We'll do everything we normally do to get the word out.
Yeah, I have just a question. It's not really germane to the, to the motion. But in the meantime, you will be preparing alternate budget, obviously.
So, the budget, if the board decides to move forward, I will start to build in assumptions into the budget that there will be some form of transaction. I can't tell you exactly what that's going to mean, because we have to sit down and do those negotiations. I can tell you without a doubt that if there is no transaction, then the budget that's proposed for 2020 would have the mill rate increased on the general fund to nineteen mills.
We are in dire circumstances right now. We do have, sorry.
No worries.
Sorry. We are in dire circumstance right now. We have to act. But I don't want to be impetuous about it. All the numbers I've looked at, the charts, all the information I was given, I have studied it, and studied it, and studied it. And I think if we take, just take a small step back and get, we don't have the evaluation for just the sewer. I noticed that we had every other option, at least the leaseback, we had, we had the water and sewer, all the different options. We didn't have that particular one in there. I think it would help the public, I think it would help me make a better decision to have two meetings in September, and have more information at that point. It may be easier to make that decision. I don't know how the rest of you feel. I'm not saying no, if you understand what I'm saying.
All right.
I just don't feel that I have enough information to make a decision based on what I've got right now.
All right. Any other? Nothing? All right. So, I'm going to make the motion, as you've stated. Is there a second?
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, or abstained?
I will abstain.
Abstained. All right. The chair votes aye, so that the motion passes. So, PFM, Phase Three Agreement, what is that motion?
Mr. Jais for my phrasing. It's all right. The second requested action item would be to approve the PFM Phase Three Agreement. This agreement is included in your packet. There's a, different structures in there depending on which transaction is selected. Keep in mind that this is done on contingency, so that if the transaction ultimately does not close, PFM does not get paid.
So, no sale, no money?
Correct.
I will make that motion. Is there a second?
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
I'll abstain.
Abstained. So, chair votes aye. So, that's a three oh one. And then, would you please talk about the selection of special counsel?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, the current solicitor doesn't have any experience with these sorts of transactions. This requires a special counsel. We have gone out and talked to three different firms.
We have gone out and talked to three different firms, we've asked them all for proposals, and those proposals are included in your packet. I can talk further, but I think you're familiar with the proposals.
Right, I'm familiar with the proposals. Was there any questions or discussion on the proposals before we move forward? I would like to make the motion to appoint Obermeyer as special counsel.
I'll second it, Mr. Chairman.
Any questions, concerns, debate?
And just to clarify, Mr. Chairman, although PFM is working on contingency, the attorney is not.
So this, this costs?
Yes.
All right.
There is cost associated with this.
And there, there's a particular attorney that we're going to request from Obermeyer?
Well, they have, they have a team. Mr. Wyatt is probably back there, he'd be one of the people involved in this, but I guess they have a full team there.
Okay. All right, so I'm going to call the question on this. All in favor?
Aye.
And abstained?
Correct.
Chair votes aye, so that motion passes. So now, what we have to talk about is the, you've already touched on it, about the information sessions that are going to get the information out to the public.
Yep.
So I think it's clear that there needs to be a lot more data available. We're going to make everything available, both on the website and at the session, well, not, obviously, everything that's available to them. I would like to see as many options in there as possible so that these questions can be asked, and long before any vote on any of these issues come to pass. Is there anything else you guys would like to see in those presentations?
Just, just more information, like, and like I said, I mean, if I'm having difficulty with it, you know, and I hear what the residents are saying, I think we, we'd all feel better if we just had more of that information, and, and I just feel like we're jumping the gun too fast. I know it's dire, but I don't see how a couple of weeks could make a difference with more information.
Right, and I, I, I hear what you're saying, and I, I, I respect it. For me, it was, I'd rather continue to talk, because we always just say no. We can always just say no. But I respect where you're coming from, I want to make sure that what you're saying and what everybody here has said tonight gets addressed, so that when, when the decision comes, whether or not to do the water, or to do, do the sewer, to do nothing, or to do everything, that, that we're not here for two and a half hours answering questions. You know, the presentation created as many questions as it answered, so we need to answer those questions now. So I, I think we're on the same page, different tacks, but I want to, I want to make sure that when you come time to make a decision, whether that be at the end of the year or whenever, if you have that opportunity. Any other further comment on the upcoming sessions? No?
No, I will work on putting those together. You know, obviously, if you have anything you'd like me to touch on during those info sessions, please let me know, or shoot me an email, and as soon as we get those scheduled, we'll, we'll let everyone know.
All right. I appreciate it. Thank you, sir. All right, I'm going to call a quick five to 10-minute recess for bio breaks and other things like that. So we're on recess. All right, and we're back. Okay, so moving on now to new business. Consider appointment of a citizen advisor to the Parks and Recreation Committee. We've received a letter from Mr. Dave Amato. The appointment for a citizen advisor would end at the end of this year, 12/31/19, which you'd have to then reapply. Can I have a motion to appoint Mr. Amato as a citizen advisor?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments, questions from the board?
Thank you for volunteering.
I understand Mr. Amato served as a public official in his former?
That is correct, in his letter, he pointed out, I believe, he was a council member in another Pennsylvania municipality, as well as other positions.
Awesome, so, with experience too. Any comment or question from the public?
Welcome.
I didn't know you were here, I feel so bad. Mr. Amato, please come on.
Come on up, show of function home.
And after this meeting, you still wish to serve.
You want my seat?
Eventually.
Yeah, good, good for you, good for you. I'm leaving, so you can have it.
Yeah, I was a member of the Borough West Reading Council.
Awesome.
So I spent time on that, we actually balanced our budget. So I know exactly what you guys are going through. It's not easy. I was also on the Recreation Committee for West Reading, I was on the West Reading Community Realization Foundation, we were in charge of the Main Street and Elm Street programs under D C E D. So I just moved here and decided, it's just in my blood.
Darren Whitney will love you.
Yes, she will.
Thank you for moving to Warminster first and foremost, and, and also volunteering, and I, I hope we see you not just on the park board, but around the municipality for years to come, so.
I'll be around.
All right. I'm assuming this vote's going to go well. So everybody in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Welcome.
Welcome to Warminster.
Thank you very much.
All right. So now, professionals' reports. Now, we have the township manager's report. I'm going to let the township manager give his report, go ahead.
You have my written report, if there's any questions, please let me know.
There you go. And we do have the written reports for the solicitors and engineers. Are there any questions for the solicitors or engineers?
No.
Engineer?
Yes.
Rosemore Donuts, I saw they took the fence down.
Pre-con next week. Pre-con meeting next week.
Funded the Res grows, good to go.
Lidl next, in September. Lidl Planning Commission first meeting, and then you should see it, your meeting in September.
Awesome. All right, now, no solicitor questions? Mr. Adnese?
All your reports were great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There you go. All right, township manager announcement of upcoming agenda items, Mr. Schuster.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Unless there's an objection, we'll cancel the September 5th meeting.
No objection.
At the next meeting, you can expect to see the amendment to the Responsible Contractor Ordinance, as you approved to advertise this evening, as well as hopefully some good golf bids to make an award. And the last thing is, hopefully, Lidl will be on the agenda, assuming things go well at Planning Commission.
Oh, that'd be great.
Yeah, I mean, at this point, you know.
I don't know what to think.
I'll, I'll talk about it.
Okay.
No, because we, both, Mr. Schuster and I, we're at another supermarket grand opening recently, we'll talk about that in supervisor comments.
Okay.
We are now at the second round of public comment. Residents have another opportunity to comment on any items, and this is a five-minute limit. Is there any public comment? Thank you. Moving on. I enjoy speaking with all of you, but I, I thank you for taking pity on me. So, we're going to now move on to supervisor comments. Ms. Fescott, please.
I just have one comment. I attended the huge event, the anniversary of, of landing on the moon, and having the huge event was amazing. They, the students from William Tennant did an amazing job, my fellow supervisors, some of them were there, Mr. McPhillips, Mr. McKee. We really enjoyed ourselves, and I just wanted to commend the students for doing a phenomenal job. Thank you.
Yeah, and, and a caveat to that, I want to thank our friend Sam Carvera, who's the purveyor over there, who opened his doors to them to do that, and had his staff on, you know, had his staff there and all, that was real nice of Sam to step up and do as well.
Any other comment?
No, just want to, we won't be meeting until after Labor Day, I want to wish all my fellow working people a very happy and restful Labor Day. What's the rule, Kenny, in the union? No work on Labor Day.
Right. Any other day of the year?
No work on Labor Day, right, so everyone, please enjoy your Labor Day weekend. Hopefully, we'll have nice weather. My wife and I are having good fortune of heading to the Wildwoods for a week or so coming up Saturday, I'm hoping to see a few of our friends down there. So, and everybody enjoy the rest of your summer, be safe.
Thank you, Mr. McKee, Mr. McPhillips.
No comment.
Thank you, Mr. McPhillips. I will keep it brief. First, I just wanted to note that Mr. Schuster and I were able to attend the preview opening of Grocery Outlet, the Warminster Grocery Outlet, over on Canaline Road at the Rosemore Shopping Center, at the old Aldi's. It's a locally owned and operated group, John and Jamie Niedrich have opened it up. It's a wonderful store, please go check it out. It's terrific that a local couple is putting their time, effort, and money into opening a small business and employing a fair number of people over there. I was also there this morning for the grand opening, and they had a line that stretched from the store all the way down past the end of the strip mall, so it had a great turnout,